We convened this November 20th, 2017, meeting of the Sonoma City Council. If I could have Mr. Ben Sessions come to the podium to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
That was perfect. Can I have a roll call, please?
Here.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Here.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Mayor Hunley?
Here.
Before this, we were in closed session, and my report for that is council gave direction to staff. At this time, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Can I go, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Item number one is comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, under state law, unless otherwise permitted under the Ralph M. Brown Act. The merits of the matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor Hunley. Ken Brown, 1396 Lubec Street in Sonoma. I have so many questions and so many desires and wishes, but affordable housing needs to come up on your agenda. We've talked to all of you, and it's time for action. And perhaps this is a positive outgrowth of the fires, so it's on everybody's minds, but it's time to put it on the agenda and act. Another thing that's also on my mind is medicinal cannabis facility in Sonoma. It's time for that to happen as well. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with my wife and the city manager, and we hope to make some progress in understanding the situation that we find ourselves in. I'm fine with a delivery service for the city of Sonoma, and my hopes are that we get a timetable and some practical, on-the-ground rules and regulations, and take care of business. There are a lot of patients out there who need their medicine, need it not from far away, but need it locally, and we hope to provide that service to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Ritchie, R-I-C-H-E-Y, 215 E-Swatt Mall. I just wanted to tell you guys thank you, staff, city manager, councilmembers, because of what a great job you guys did with Freedom Week. And I went to every single event I possibly could, and I was so happy to get back to work today so I could rest. So, thank you, thank you, and affordable housing and cannabis, I totally agree on.
Thank you.
Hi, Shawna Davis, 850 Donald Street, Sonoma. And after a conversation with Mr. David Cook, I thought about it and wanted to bring forward what the No Pay Cafe has been doing in our town as, I feel it's a broader issue than just evacuations, we're now looking at food insecurities. And I thought it would be nice for you to hear the nonprofits in our valley, they're receiving food on a weekly basis. So we start Boys and Girls Club, Brown Baggers of Sonoma, Dunbar School, El Verano School, Faha, Flowery Elementary School, Glen Allen Fair Community, Kenwood Elementary School, La Luz, Lighthouse Church, Garden of Eating Lighthouse, Sonoma Valley Lions Club, Meals on Wheels, Moose Lodge, S-A-Y, Social Advocates for Youth, SDC, and SDC Crew with the Arm Guard, which is still on premise, Sonoma Valley Community Health Center, Sonoma Springs Community Hall, SOS, The Haven, the Homeless Shelter, Team Rubicon, which is a disaster cleanup for Glen Allen Region 9, Sonoma Vintage House, Teen Services, Sonoma, and The Haven Homeless Center for the Creek, for the homeless that live in the creek. And with that said, I think it's actually really important for maybe just to hear the numbers and for the community, I did forget, plus, we're also sending food to two nonprofits in Mendocino County that have no access to food. So we receive the food here in Sonoma, and our team of volunteers drive it up to Redwood Valley Grange and Plowshares of Mendocino County. And that's all happening at the backside of the Vintage House, every Wednesday from 11:00 to 1:00. We've partnered with the Sonoma Plaza Kiwanis, and they provide us with handy volunteers who deliver the food to any nonprofit who would like to serve food for free in our community. With that said, the Facebook chefs, and yes, the company, Facebook itself, has sponsored 100% of all of this food with zero stickers, labels, tags, anything. There's been not a dime spent, it's all complimentary to our community. So Facebook chefs have provided over 200,000 meals to the Sonoma Valley. Chef's Fight Fire have provided over 25,000 meals to the valley. Kendall Jackson Wineries provided 20,000 meals to the valley. Ruri was a minimum of 2,500 meals, and I'm sure someone can fill those numbers in for me, please. And Amy's Fine Food has provided two sets of 22 pallets of canned food for our community. That's two semi-trucks full of canned foods. And those are being stored at Seha Winery for us. I wanted to thank a few businesses for us to all think about who we should support. Seha Winery, of course. Vela Cheese allows us to store our extra perishable foods in their walk-in. Sonoma Valley Springs Community Hall allows us to pack in their commercial kitchen. Two anonymous donors of $2,500 gas and gift cards to give to families who lost their homes. Fishman Supply, and two anonymous donors of gas and gift cards in the amount of 500. And we do have an advisory committee here, which we are all 100% volunteer, myself, my husband Ben Sessions, Mara Caitlin Roche, Steve Golliams, Melanie Wong, Lori Gallion, Lori Hohorst, Lorende Merkins, Lila Weinberger, and Bob Ray. And with that said, we're continuing to feed through the end of December, every Wednesday. This week, we have 7,500 meals coming in, and we plan on delivering 11 pallets of canned food around the valley this week. So thank you guys very much, and I hope that we can look at this on a broader scale for our community, because we're feeding the serious food insecure, we're feeding the working-class people of our town that are having to decide between paying their rent or buying food. And so we are hoping to help them keep paying their rent, and we provide them with some food. So I hope to put a dollar value to this and return back to the council after the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will bring it back. Do we have, where are we, do we have any dedications tonight?
Do, Mayor. I would like to dedicate this evening to, in the name of Joyce Murphy, she's passed away actually this morning, and she was the welcome lady that used to welcome people to Sonoma, a wonderful, wonderful woman, probably brought a lot of business to Sonoma because she talked about all the businesses here in Sonoma. So she was also a member of Seroptimist, and of course, the Sonoma Valley Women's Club. So she certainly will be missed by all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have one by the Vice Mayor.
And I'd just like the community and council to think about is Estefania Soto and Kivia Atkins, who were tragically killed this past week.
Yes, thank you. Item number four is the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Do we have any questions or items to be removed by the council? Seeing none, I will take it out to the public for public comment. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for a motion.
So moved to make a motion to approve 4.2.
Does that include a 4.1?
Sorry, 4.1 as well.
Yes.
All right. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number one is comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, under state law, unless otherwise permitted under the Ralph M. Brown Act. The merits of the matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor Hunley. Ken Brown, 1396 Lubec Street in Sonoma. I have so many questions and so many desires and wishes, but affordable housing needs to come up on your agenda. We've talked to all of you, and it's time for action. And perhaps this is a positive outgrowth of the fires, so it's on everybody's minds, but it's time to put it on the agenda and act. Another thing that's also on my mind is medicinal cannabis facility in Sonoma. It's time for that to happen as well. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with my wife and the city manager, and we hope to make some progress in understanding the situation that we find ourselves in. I'm fine with a delivery service for the city of Sonoma, and my hopes are that we get a timetable and some practical, on-the-ground rules and regulations, and take care of business. There are a lot of patients out there who need their medicine, need it not from far away, but need it locally, and we hope to provide that service to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Ritchie, R-I-C-H-E-Y, 215 E-Swatt Mall. I just wanted to tell you guys thank you, staff, city manager, councilmembers, because of what a great job you guys did with Freedom Week. And I went to every single event I possibly could, and I was so happy to get back to work today so I could rest. So, thank you, thank you, and affordable housing and cannabis, I totally agree on.
Thank you.
Hi, Shawna Davis, 850 Donald Street, Sonoma. And after a conversation with Mr. David Cook, I thought about it and wanted to bring forward what the No Pay Cafe has been doing in our town as, I feel it's a broader issue than just evacuations, we're now looking at food insecurities. And I thought it would be nice for you to hear the nonprofits in our valley, they're receiving food on a weekly basis. So we start Boys and Girls Club, Brown Baggers of Sonoma, Dunbar School, El Verona School, Faha, Flower Elementary School, Glen Allen Fair Community, Kenwood Elementary School, La Luz, Lighthouse Church, Garden of Eating Lighthouse, Sonoma Valley Lions Club, Meals on Wheels, Moose Lodge, S-A-Y, Social Advocates for Youth, SDC, and SDC Crew with the Arm Guard, which is still on premise, Sonoma Valley Community Health Center, Sonoma Springs Community Hall, SOS, The Haven, the Homeless Shelter, Team Rubicon, which is a disaster cleanup for Glen Allen Region 9, Sonoma Vintage House, Teen Services, Sonoma, and The Haven Homeless Center for the Creek, for the homeless that live in the creek. And with that said, I think it's actually really important for maybe just to hear the numbers and for the community, I did forget, plus, we're also sending food to two nonprofits in Mendocino County that have no access to food. So we receive the food here in Sonoma, and our team of volunteers drive it up to Redwood Valley Grange and Plowshares of Mendocino County. And that's all happening at the backside of the Vintage House, every Wednesday from 11:00 to 1:00. We've partnered with the Sonoma Plaza Kiwanis, and they provide us with handy volunteers who deliver the food to any nonprofit who would like to serve food for free in our community. With that said, the Facebook chefs, and yes, the company, Facebook itself, has sponsored 100% of all of this food with zero stickers, labels, tags, anything. There's been not a dime spent, it's all complimentary to our community. So Facebook chefs have provided over 200,000 meals to the Sonoma Valley. Chef's Fight Fire have provided over 25,000 meals to the valley. Kendall Jackson Winery has provided 20,000 meals to the valley. Ruri was a minimum of 2,500 meals, and I'm sure someone can fill those numbers in for me, please. And Amy's Fine Food has provided two sets of 22 pallets of canned food for our community. That's two semi-trucks full of canned foods. And those are being stored at Seha Winery for us. I wanted to thank a few businesses for us to all think about who we should support. Seha Winery, of course. Vela Cheese allows us to store our extra perishable foods in their walk-in. Sonoma Valley Springs Community Hall allows us to pack in their commercial kitchen. Two anonymous donors of $2,500 gas and gift cards to give to families who lost their homes. Fishman Supply, and two anonymous donors of gas and gift cards in the amount of 500. And we do have an advisory committee here, which we are all 100% volunteer, myself, my husband Ben Sessions, Mara Caitlin Roche, Steve Golliams, Melanie Wong, Lori Gallion, Lori Hohorst, Lorende Merkins, Lilla Weinberger, and Bob Ray. And with that said, we're continuing to feed through the end of December, every Wednesday. This week, we have 7,500 meals coming in, and we plan on delivering 11 pallets of canned food around the valley this week. So thank you guys very much, and I hope that we can look at this on a broader scale for our community, because we're feeding the serious food insecure, we're feeding the working-class people of our town that are having to decide between paying their rent or buying food. And so we are hoping to help them keep paying their rent, and we provide them with some food. So I hope to put a dollar value to this and return back to the council after the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will bring it back. Do we have, where are we, do we have any dedications tonight?
Do, Mayor. I would like to dedicate this evening to, in the name of Joyce Murphy, she's passed away actually this morning, and she was the welcome lady that used to welcome people to Sonoma, a wonderful, wonderful woman, probably brought a lot of business to Sonoma because she talked about all the businesses here in Sonoma. So she was also a member of Seroptimist, and of course, the Sonoma Valley Women's Club. So she certainly will be missed by all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have one by the Vice Mayor.
And I'd just like the community and council to think about is Estefania Soto and Kivia Atkins, who were tragically killed this past week.
Yes, thank you. Item number four is the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Do we have any questions or items to be removed by the council? Seeing none, I will take it out to the public for public comment. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for a motion.
So moved to make a motion to approve 4.2.
One second.
Does that include a 4.1?
Sorry, 4.1 as well.
Yes.
All right. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Item number 5.1, public hearing, discussion, consideration, and possible action to introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending Title 19, Sections 19.10.050 and 19.50.110, amending the regulations pertaining to vacation rentals and finding such action exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. At this time, I will turn it over to our planning director.
Thank you, Mayor Hunley, members of the city council. In October of 2016, the council unanimously adopted an interim moratorium ordinance on the approval of new applications for vacation rentals in order to allow changes to the regulations to be discussed and implemented. So tonight, we have a draft ordinance for the council to consider, but before getting to that, just to briefly recap the process that led up to that. In November of 2016, the council just conducted a background review on the current regulations that apply to vacation rentals. Later, the following year, in May and June, the planning commission held study sessions on vacation rentals, looking at both permitting issues and also operational issues. The options and recommendations that came out of those study sessions were reported out to the council in June, and at that time, council gave direction as to its preferences with respect to what the ordinance should look like. And in that June meeting, one of the key directions from the city council was to further limit the opportunity for new applications for vacation rentals to be made. Currently, vacation rentals are prohibited in residential zoning districts except as an adaptive reuse of a historic structure, but they are, except of course, now that we're in this moratorium, allowed through the regular use permit process in the mixed use and in the commercial zone. So the direction from the council is to eliminate the allowance for vacation rentals in those zoning districts and to limit further any new applications to vacation rentals to the adaptive reuse of historic structures. So with that direction, we developed a draft ordinance that was reviewed by the planning commission in its meeting of September 14th. They made some changes mainly with respect to the operational requirements portion of the ordinance, and now it is in front of the council. So we've already gone over the changes to the permitting limitations. In terms of the operational requirements, there would be some updated standards. To just briefly review, as follows, there would be an occupancy, maximum overnight occupancy limits would be established in the ordinance. There would be a prohibition on outdoor amplified sound. There would be a requirement for a property manager, and there would be requirements for internet advertisements and listings to both report or disclose the limitations on occupancy and also to include reference to a business license. This would help us enforce our vacation rental ordinance and to identify illegal vacation rentals. And lastly, to help recover the costs of ensuring that operational requirements are met, an allowance for an annual inspection fee could be established. This ordinance does not in and of itself establish such a fee, but it provides for that option as a subsequent action if the council so desires. And we note in the staff report that on your very next item, the council will be considering, among other issues, a potential allowance to allow vacation rentals to be rented on a long-term basis without threatening their non-conforming status. So right now, in the ordinance, and this has been true since 1999, I think, when the ordinance was first adopted, vacation rentals are defined as a rental of property of no more than 29 days. Now, from time to time, certainly vacation rentals have exceeded that allowance, and we certainly don't regard this as an enforcement issue. But if a vacation rental were, that is illegal non-conforming use, were to cease operation as a vacation rental, that is, for example, rent itself out for a period of a year on a long-term basis, then it loses its non-conforming status. And so the allowance, your next agenda item is really about providing for additional opportunities for temporary housing for persons displaced by the fire. But the question has been raised as to whether that limitation should just be removed as part of this process. The planning commission discussed that issue but didn't reach any conclusion, but they wanted to spring that question forward to the city council. So with that, I will conclude and just try to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time?
I do have a question. David, you know, obviously, I've been looking at the list of the, what I consider to be B&Bs. They fit perfectly within this criteria, is that right? I mean, for the number of days, those are not long-term stays.
B&Bs, too, are limited in terms of the time that they can rent out their rooms, correct?
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will take it out to the public for public comment.
My name is Richard Silver, 95 Bernhard Avenue, Sonoma, in the Springs. Hi. I lived in San Francisco from 1969 to 2015, 37 years in North Beach. We had a tremendous problem with short-term rentals, in part because any, most of the companies, VRBO and Airbnb at that time, had not provided in their host agreements that the city tax or county tax or any taxes be extracted by Airbnb and remitted to the entity, which meant you had a lot of, and I mean a lot, we found 78 within two blocks of where I lived, people who had not registered either with the city for a business license or with Airbnb, and yet they were running it through Airbnb. So for this issue and also the subsequent wish, my advice, given graciously, would be that you include a provision that the city remit to the largest of these short-term rental companies, your ordinance, and the requirement that those companies not permit any hosts to list on their site unless they've registered with the city. It's easy for them to do, they don't disclose the address on listings unless you purchase a night. I had an issue with the city of Larksboro where I found that they, in fact, are the agency overseeing a good part of Greenbray, and while they had a prohibition on short-term rentals of any structure of less than, of 29 days or less in the entire area, they had no provision to observe, collect, or impose any fines or fees. I suggested and gave them the names of Airbnb, their senior management, and said, just send them the ordinance. I'd given them 14 different locations that were in violation on the website. So I'm just sharing that with you in your posing to any consultants or in drafting your resolution. That's a way that you don't have to track and chase people. The other thing is you can make it clear to them that if they do not report income that they receive from short-term rentals, they're either their Schedule C or their federal or state income tax, and then they are in violation of federal tax law. That's a nice little twist of the elbow that please register with the city, pay your fees, and have the companies extract the taxes and remit directly to you into your coffers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Zach Weinberg. I'm the owner of the Cottage and Spa at 310 First Street East, also manager of Tulsi Cottage, also president of Stacey Sonoma Valley, formerly the Sonoma Valley B&B Association. Collectively, we represent some boutique hotels, B&B, and several legal vacation rentals. We also have representation on the TID board and the Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau. I'd like to start off by thanking the planning commission and David Goodison for your continued conversation and cooperation working through the proposed ordinance. Thank you to four of our city council members for taking the time to meet with vacation rental owners and gain a better understanding of the business and proposed ordinance. Your time is very much appreciated. The proposed ordinance presented to you tonight conforms overall with what was discussed with the city staff and planning commission, with a few exceptions that I'd like to review. The first, occupancy limits. We feel the business owner should set and post occupancy based on number of beds available and space available. Having a predetermined occupancy limit based on bedrooms is not correct, it should be based on beds available. Noise limits. We agree that vacation rentals should be subject to the same noise ordinance as other properties such as B&Bs and hotels, but ask that specific reference to amplified sound be removed unless the same language exists in the general noise ordinance where the city plans to add such language to the ordinance in the near future. Basically, vacation rentals should be on the same playing field as B&Bs and hotels. In regards to the proposed inspection fee, if found to be necessary, inspection fees should be paid for from penalty collection related to illegal vacation rental activity. It would not be fair to single out vacation rentals as being required to pay inspection fees that are not otherwise required for hotels or B&Bs. A note was added regarding temporary housing allowances. In regards to the 29-day limit for all vacation rental stays, we ask the council hold a future discussion about if such a rule is necessary. Guests that wish to rent a vacation rental over 29 days are ultimately a benefit to the vacation rental owners and our local economy. I also want to point out that for hotels, B&Bs, and vacation rentals, when we file our monthly TOT through the city using a city document, it has a line item asking if any rentals were over 29 days to waive the TOT. So it's kind of interesting that we are held to the standard of rentals at or below 29 days when city documents clearly list that, you know, we have the option to rent over that stay. Also, in short term, we encourage an extension of the mid-to-long-term housing allowance due to several vacation rentals currently being occupied by displaced fire victims, some of which do not have a set timeline for when they can return home. It should be pointed out that vacation rental owners as a whole have done an amazing job of helping fire victims.
I'm going to give you about 10 more seconds.
Perfect. And allowances should be made to continue such efforts. Finally, it is our recommendation that vacation rental moratorium be part of a revised general plan and long-term city planning.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wayne Sobon. I'm a owner and manager of Sonoma Farmhouse, which is our two vacation rental on Third Street West at 446 and 454 Third Street West. We've been there for a number of years. I would also like to agree with actually both of the comments before myself, especially also thanking the council as well as David Goodison and the staff on all the cooperation and work and, I think, collaborative discussion that's led to this ordinance. And we, and I agree with the comments that were just made about both our agreements with the ordinance and some of the concerns we have about it. I would like to go back to the comments about our concerns as legal vacation rental owners. I think one of the biggest subterranean problems continues to be all the illegal vacation rental units in the city, which take away from housing stock and actually to our detriment and to hotels and other businesses don't pay their fair share of taxes and then therefore undercut people in terms of money, and the city loses its appropriate taxes. I know there's an enforcement effort. I think it would be good, I know it's not really germane to tonight's discussion you're having, but I think it would be a great discussion for the council to bring back on a public discussion, both a report by the city about its current enforcement efforts and make that more public and more of a discussion point. And I would also suggest we really should go further as a city and look at both what some of the larger websites like Airbnb and VRBO do in terms of they're allowing rentals to be on their site even though they're not legally permitted by the city. That should be, that should be a loophole, I agree, that should be closed, and I think you are, other cities like San Francisco have fought that fight and won, and you can do that. I think the second thing is that you should also look at some of the larger management companies. There's property management companies and rental companies, that they themselves, you can require them that they are only allowed to rent actually licensed rental properties in the city and not be a subterranean route for people to rent illegally unpermitted vacation rentals. And I think that the other thing is you can, as I think noted by the first commenter, you can require the larger websites like Airbnb and VRBO to report to you the rentals that they've made that are within the city limits that are not licensed and thereby get the appropriate fees and taxes that are owed to the city. This would make us on a level playing field and not allow these illegal uses to undermine your efforts to properly police our housing stock. So those would be my recommendations to council. I know it's not really something for tonight's discussion, but it's, I think it's something that you can, given that you're now, would be legally cutting off any further licensed vacation rentals, I think there'll be further pressure actually for a whole underground economy of unlicensed vacation rentals now unless there's a stepped-up enforcement effort to appropriately balance the equities here. So that's what I would highly recommend. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson?
Wendy Peterson, I'm on the board of Stacey Sonoma, and again, echoing what has been said and you've, those of you that have met with us, we are so appreciative that we've been able to be part of this process. We're part of your business community and being able to work with you and kind of have us speak the same language when we're talking about the operational side and then the administrative side. So we think we're there and almost there to be able to have something that is a great ordinance that we as legal vacation rentals are operating within again, and then working in the future to all these other things as we look at other things that we can help you with. We're kind of your subject matter experts and hope to be able to add that to it. Again, just another look at what we've talked about. It's kind of the snapshot of the 41 legal vacation rentals. We're really part of a diverse lodging community in Sonoma, and I think it's one of the things that talks to the character and charm of Sonoma, that when you come here, you have a variety of places to stay, and to stay in a smaller intimate vacation rental really offers the kind of experience that we know people count on when they come to Sonoma. Again, we contribute to the revenue source for the city, no records of complaints, and again, the number of small business owners and the people they employ and the sort of the collective work that happens in partnership with you. The other thing that I'm excited about is that your new city website is going to be the place where the operational and the enforcement all come together, so it'll be easy for people to identify legal vacation rentals, they'll be able to see what the ordinance looks like. It'll be kind of a one-stop to make sure that we're in compliance and that you're being able to see the oversight. So we really appreciate this opportunity over the past months to be able to really work with the city, and we hope that we'll have a great ordinance that we can all share. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Who would like to start us off?
If you don't mind, I'd like to. I've heard, I heard an awful lot. So what I heard from Mr. Weinberg was the occupant, occupancy limits, that it doesn't depend on rooms, but it depends on beds. Is that what I think I heard? So where is that distinction?
Well, right now, in the draft that's before you, it states in terms of occupancy limits, and again, this is a new provision in the ordinance, not previously established. Maximum overnight occupancy for vacation rentals shall be limited to up to two, to a maximum of two persons per sleeping room or guest room plus two additional persons per unit. Now, I believe that the point that Mr. Weinberg and others were making is that, well, maybe you've got a bed and a bunk bed in that, in one of the rooms. Maybe there's a couch that folds out in the living room. So they're looking for additional flexibility beyond the two additional persons per unit provision, or I suppose perhaps are looking for that to be struck altogether because we don't necessarily want to go to each vacation rental and, you know, count up the number of, you know, possible sleeping quarters within each of them.
Okay, it's just something I thought, you know, it makes sense because if you have a room, like you said, there may- room, like you said, maybe there's just two beds, but no, three beds, you have, you know, a mother bringing her two children on vacation, so that's three beds. But even though it says it's one bedroom that you allow two. So the other one was the noise limits, remove, do they, are they the same limits, noise limits, that perhaps hotels might have? Is that where I?
Typically, a hotel is reviewed by a use permit, and sometimes there are special use permit conditions that might apply to a hotel with respect to outdoor noise, but also frequently a hotel is going to be located in a commercial zone, and so maybe it's not even that big of a deal. It really depends on the situation. But the use permit gives you the latitude to address something like a swimming pool, for example, that is perhaps nearby a residential area. But, you know, in this case, we're talking about kind of a blanket limitation, and the primary statement in that section is that vacation rentals should be operated in conformance of the noise ordinance. But there is an additional line there, outdoor amplified sound shall be prohibited, and that's what the objection is to. Now, I personally don't believe that we would enforce that with respect to someone's iPhone, but, you know, it is in there just as a means of further restricting outdoor noise associated with a vacation rental. Now, I do want to just say one thing that I probably should have said at the outset, and that is that complaints about legal vacation rentals are quite rare. We haven't had one really in a long time. And so that is a credit to the current community of vacation rental owners within city limits. But that said, when we do get such complaints, it's almost always about outdoor noise.
Thank you. I have one or two more questions that I've just forgotten, and I was trying to think Oh, my main concern, of course, and I'm sure it's the concern of people who have legal rental units, is possibly our process of looking at the illegal units, and I think they, I don't know, I didn't hear that San Francisco made that commitment. I've been reading all about San Francisco with the illegal, all of this stuff, and it's just unbelievable how much money they've been putting into those, you know, trying to investigate them. I think we had a company that was reviewing the website. Is that still going on?
No, we rely on our code enforcement department now to go after illegal vacation rentals.
How is that going?
Well, they're very active. It's a priority for them. It's been a priority for them ever since that was established.
I do think, though, that this is something over the next year that I'd like us maybe to look at, while our code enforcement has been doing their best to look into these areas. I think, you know, there are firms out there that also, you know, have algorithms and look at some of these things, and this is their business day in and day out. It's not our code enforcement's business day in and day out. So it may be, over the next year, I'd like to look at, you know, are there some other ways that we may want to look at this enforcement? And so that's something that we'll be looking at in staff and seeing if there is maybe a more, just a broader way to reach out using a firm that maybe this is all they do day in and day out.
So one of my complaints, of course, is of these companies, is they're so awesome that they're way ahead of everybody, and they're so awesome that they don't want to do rules. And that's, it's so, you know, wonderful thing about our country, we have freedom, but that means you take my freedom, and that's what they do, is take the freedom. And business are away from other people who are doing this illegally. So I'm kind of interested in knowing if they actually do police themselves. I find it unbelievable that Airbnb and the other ones do that, but it would be interesting, maybe we can find that out. It's not necessary, but, you know, I just always have a bad taste in my mouth. I've been reading about these things, and they're not, some of them not safe. Those are some of the other things I'm concerned about for people here in Sonoma, especially for visitors. You want to come here and feel good and safe, and so I'm concerned about this whole issue. And I heard you say "they" in code enforcement officer. Don't we just have a half person? But that was nice of you, David, to say "they."
Well, it's not exactly an "I," but we have a halftime code enforcement person and the city prosecutor.
Yeah. Who's next?
I just wanted to add to that, is with the code enforcement, I think the industry helps that process as well. When you identify, the folks who are in the industry identify where there's a problem or something that goes on. I mean, I've heard of things of couches going for 80 bucks a night in Sonoma and things like that. And I also agree that the ordinance has written, I'm going to support it as it's written, because we don't really have the enforcement to go and say, all right, there's four people in that bed, and, I mean, it's just not going to happen. So just to have those basic rules, I think, makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Well, I wanted to start, I actually met with a number of people that run legal vacation rentals and are very passionate about it. And I think that it came to me, I understand now that they feel very maligned by all the comments about vacation rentals, and they're doing their best to run great businesses. And it is a nice thing that some small little guys in town can benefit from all of this tourist trade, and they have basically small businesses that they're running. So there are impacts of vacation rentals, but I wanted to recognize that we have legal vacation rentals and B and Bs that are doing a great job and add a lot to our community. So thanks for taking the time to meet with me and talk about your issues. And so I just want to say, when we talk about vacation rentals and stopping new ones and all this, it's not a critique, I don't think, of what you're doing. It's just a, you know, a broader picture about what's happening, and there's no intention, as far as I know, to try and stop the ones that are already legal. We're talking about new ones and not the ones that already exist. So I don't know that that had to be said, but for the record, I understand that now. So on this ordinance, I support it. In terms of the occupancy limits, I understand that more people could be in a property, but I assume that this is a compromise with the neighbors over parking. And so if you have a three-bedroom house and then you have three couples renting it, that means that you're going to have three cars instead of maybe one or two if people live there. And so I think that that is a rub with the neighbors, is taking up a lot of parking. So I think that's kind of a fair way to do it. I would suggest that the form where you turn in your TOT or somehow when you register for your business license would say what your estimated occupancy would be as a way to keep track of that. On the noise limits, I just wanted to know, what is amplified sound? Is that a radio?
If it's a loud radio that we get a complaint about, then yeah, it's a radio.
I mean, I, you know, I mean, I guess I can go with Councilmember Edwards that we don't have the ability to police this specifically, but it seems a little drastic if anybody wants to suggest changing that. And then with regard to the inspection fee, what is the idea behind that?
Well, I think earlier on, there was a longer list of potential restrictions and requirements that were being considered with respect to legal vacation rentals that might have demanded an annual inspection process. So this is, in there is kind of a fallback in case we need to establish that sort of process, but the way it is set up right now, I really don't see that happening except for the existing fire inspection, which is already established and has its own fee already.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Cook?
Well, I want to thank the groups for reaching out with vacation rentals, and I'll echo what Councilmember Harrington said. A lot of times I say vacation rentals when I actually mean illegal vacation rentals, and it's something that we want to make sure, because vacation rentals, legal vacation rentals are a benefit to our society and the city of Sonoma, because not everyone wants to stay in a hotel. So they provide a service. The illegal vacation rentals do just the opposite. And anybody who's listened to me for the last five years understands that I do not like illegal vacation rentals, and if you know one's happening, call me or call the city of Sonoma so we can go and shut them down, because they actually aren't, you know, permitted, and there's a lot of safety issues among a lot of other things. So I will be supporting this tonight. But I do want to thank Wendy Peterson, and not to call people out from the dais, but it was nice, you know, talking with them, because I think sometimes when we do talk about vacation rentals, we forget to say the word "illegal." So I'm here to make a motion on the ordinance, if my colleagues, or did you want to wait and talk?
Oh, go ahead and make a motion and then I'll comment.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sonoma amending Title 19, Sections 19.10.050 and 1950.110 of the Sonoma Municipal Code by changing the regulations pertaining to vacation rentals.
I'll second that.
And I will also be supporting this ordinance. So we started this journey October of last year, and we are finishing it today. So we're at almost a little over a year. I think if we hadn't lost a month, we probably would have been in exactly a year. But I think this was something that a lot of the community was behind, even though we don't really hear as much chatter about vacation rentals these days because it's other things. But I'm really happy that we've come to this result. I think now the, our 41, is that how many are grandfathered in, existing vacation rentals, which congratulations for getting in the door, can focus on, you know, building your reputation for the little businesses that you have, but I'm also really glad that the door is closed, except in the circumstance of historic adaptive reuse, meaning if someone has a historic property and they can't afford to take care of it, rather than us losing a historic asset, we will potentially allow them to turn that into a vacation rental just so we can keep the historic structure. But I was at the Sonoma County Economic Forecast Breakfast last week, and the report was good. The economy overall is pretty great. They think even this area can bounce back maybe in the next year if we can rebuild fast enough. But one of the things they noticed is, they noted it last year, is that the growth of our economy is restrained by our, the lack of available workforce. We're at over full employment now, and the thing that's limiting our labor force is, of course, housing. And they specifically called out the fact that now that Sonoma County has over 3,000 vacation rentals, that it has made a noticeable impact on the labor force, which has also made a noticeable impact on our economy. So I agree that what we have, vacation rentals that we have, we should, you know, take care of them. I hope business goes well, but I do think this is the right move. And I think that renewing our focus on illegal vacation rentals, not only because it gives our legal vacation rentals a bad rap, and when usually when people are complaining about vacation rentals, it's usually something that's, you know, underground that we don't know about. So I think, you know, there's TOT to collect and fines and fees, and also the result is that we get to keep our housing as housing. So with that, do we have any final comments before we go for a vote? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Agamati?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Hundley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 5.2, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action on the Recommendations of the City Council Housing Subcommittee with Respect to Short-Term Measures Addressing Housing Loss and Displacement Resulting from the October Fires, Including Consideration of (1) An Urgency Ordinance Establishing Short-Term Allowances for Housing;[1462.38][1462.38](2) A Resolution Addressing Rent Gouging; and (3) A Resolution Establishing a Fee Waiver Program for Accessory Dwelling Units and Allocating $30,000 from the Disaster Recovery Fund for That Purpose. And at this time, we will begin again with our Planning Director.
Thank you, Mayor Hundley, and members of the city council. On October 23rd, the council established a number of subcommittees tasked with addressing issues and responses to the October fire disaster, including the appointment of Mayor Hundley and Councilmember Harrington to the Housing Subcommittee. Since that time, the Subcommittee has held a series of meetings to discuss short-term and long-term options for addressing housing needs created or exacerbated by the fires, and tonight we're reporting out to the council on some of the short-term measures that have been recommended by the Subcommittee. The first of these is an urgency ordinance allowing for temporary housing, and there are three allowances associated with this ordinance. The first is a temporary allowance for RV occupancy. Under this allowance, a residential property owner could utilize a recreational vehicle as temporary housing for persons displaced by the October fire event for an initial period of 45 days. After that initial period, a temporary use permit would be required, which is subject to an administrative review. The second, within this ordinance, would be an allowance for the use of guest rooms. Under this item, existing guest houses, pool houses, and other detached residential accessory structures could be rented to fire victims. This would apply to structures that are approved for residential occupancy. And the third allowance is for long-term rental of legal vacation rentals and bed-and-breakfast units. So under this portion of the ordinance, legal vacation rentals and bed-and-breakfast units could be used as long-term rentals for more than one year without losing their nonconforming status. Now, under this urgency ordinance, all of these allowances would expire on December 31st, 2018, unless the council took some subsequent action to continue them for a longer period. So these are considered temporary measures. The second element of these recommendations is a resolution addressing rent gouging, or I'm going to have to start correcting myself and say price gouging. Through this resolution, the council would direct code enforcement to monitor rental listings for potential rent gouging and to document potential instances that it discovers or that are reported to it. And with any such encounter in terms of a mental violation, code enforcement would refer the case to the county district attorney for further review and enforcement. And lastly, before you, under this item is a resolution that would establish a fee waiver program for accessory dwelling units. Through this program, the council would appropriate funds and direct staff to immediately develop and implement a program granting fee waivers and reimbursements to encourage the construction of accessory dwelling units. As proposed, this program would be limited to one per residence and capped at $5,000. The recommended appropriation is $30,000 drawn from the already established disaster recovery These measures have been recommended by the Housing Subcommittee because they can be implemented immediately, and they are compatible with the resources available to Sonoma. And while consideration was given to the concept of identifying sites within city limits and establishing a process to allow small clusters of temporary housing, that approach is not recommended at this time. The county is assessing the number, is assessing the number of units that will be needed for long-term temporary housing, and their focus right now is to identify large sites capable of accommodating hundreds of temporary units, with the centers of fairgrounds being the likely setting of such a large-scale temporary housing facility. In, with respect to more local areas within Sonoma Valley, displaced households in Glen Ellen and Kenwood are being placed by a private group led by members of those communities. And just to put this in perspective, the Subcommittee is considering a variety of long-term measures to address housing issues. In terms of immediate next steps, you already took a step with your previous item addressing vacation rentals. And coming up at your meeting of December 18th, the council will conduct a follow-up discussion and provide direction on the housing impact fee study and possible changes to the city's inclusionary affordable unit ordinance. And in the meantime, the Housing Subcommittee has provided direction to staff concerning information needs associated with that discussion. And more generally, the Subcommittee will continue to meet and evaluate additional options to address the needs of displaced households as well as long-term housing. So tonight, we just have these three items in front of you, and just to update the council, we've made some adjustments to the two resolutions that are before you tonight. First, with respect to the price gouging resolution, we're using the term "price gouging," so that's a change to the resolution title, and we're making reference to the penal code section. And we're making reference to the Penal Code section on page two of the resolution. Just so we're just being very clear about what it is that this addresses. And thanks to the city attorney for that recommendation. And secondly, with respect to the accessory dwelling unit program, we want to make it clear that this is about reimbursement as well as fee waivers. Because obviously, the city doesn't have the ability to waive a school impact fee or to waive a sanitation fee. But this program would include reimbursement for those fees, again, up to that cap of $5,000 per accessory dwelling unit. So that's another set of suggested changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council at this time?
I do have questions. Could I just bring your attention to, A, temporary allowance for RV occupancy? I don't know if it mentions here, and it's probably something silly, but I've heard it through FEMA that they are only accepting paved lots for RVs because of the rainy season. And I don't know what that means or if anybody's thinking about that, but this is just what we've heard, I've heard, especially from other people who have lots, but they're not paved. And so I just wanted to bring that up. The temporary allowance for guest rooms. My question is, are there limits to the number of guests? I don't know if that's relevant. And, let's see. And my other question is, in this somewhere, is there any room for support for legal aid? Because they actually do a lot of the heavy lifting with respect to price gouging, or whatever we were calling it. So I just wanted to know if there's any funding and legal aid. They've approached us, I think, a couple of times. And I just thought it would be maybe advantageous to even look at that. That's it. Thank you.
Well, just to go down the list very briefly. First, with respect to the RV allowance. This would be more about, for example, we had a call just last week from a person who lives in Sonoma. Her brother and his family lost their home in the fire, but they have access to a recreational vehicle and, you know, would like to make use of it on a temporary basis, while, you know, right now, everyone's just kind of crammed into the house. So this isn't so much about FEMA trailers as it is about people who, you know, already happen to have access to that option.
And I wasn't referring to FEMA trailers.
Oh, oh, excuse me.
I was thinking it was just, I guess, the...
Oh, just the principle of whether they could be in a yard area. I see what you mean. I see. I see. I misunderstood. Okay. And in terms of occupancy of, say, a pool house or a guest room, typically, those are, you know, basically studio-like. And so under the building code, the limit would be two persons in that scenario. And with respect to legal aid, I apologize. I wasn't aware that they had made a funding request to the city, but that would just be an issue for the council to consider, as you have suggested. Yeah.
Just something to consider, because everyone that actually litigates.
Oh, I did want to add one point to that. And we are putting together, and we should have this up pretty quickly, a webpage that just has information and links to a whole variety of different programs, including the different legal aid programs that are available to people in that situation.
Now, just a question of funding. Maybe I have some questions about this, but I think it's part of that whole...
Just a question. I just want to maybe for clarity. Councilmember Agamotti, you asked a question kind of paved. Are these lots going to be on, RVs be on paved? I think it may be helpful for the community, just so we're clear. This would allow folks to put an RV in their driveway. If there was a large enough lot or a side yard, there's potential for it to be pulled not into a, might or may not be paved, but it could be put in, you know, a larger lot in some type of back area. All of those things would be permissible under what is currently within this ordinance. And then that's would be for 45 days. I think if there were concerns from neighbors, et cetera, about a placement, I would assume we would hear about that. And before kind of the next longer-term administrative action would be approved, those concerns, I assume, would be brought to staff's attention. And those would be considered before staff would be approving those ongoing. So I think that's a little bit of the conversation we've had. But I did want, I think it's important because, you know, in this crisis, we need some quick solutions, and RVs are one of those things. But I can also appreciate long-term. It's got to work within the neighborhood it is. And we have different types of neighborhoods, different types of lots. Some places, it might work really well. Some places, it, you know, it may be an issue that needs to be looked at individually. So just for that point of clarity.
I only brought it up to provide a standard possibly for people. And, but, you know, I certainly would live in a muddy lot if I didn't have a place to live. But I just thought, you know, just to consider a standard of some...
It's a very fair point and a good question. Just, I wanted to kind of elucidate more on the point that you were making. Thank you.
And I wanted to point out that currently, there are no restrictions as for RV storage on residential property, correct?
Well, they can't be located within a front yard.
In the yard itself, but driveway is...
Right.
Who's next? Oh, wait, we didn't have questions. Questions?
I don't have a question, but can I make a comment as part of the Subcommittee about this report?
Yes, you might.
Well, I think that, especially because our, many of our housing activists are here. Of course, the fire has exacerbated our already incredibly tight housing stock. And this is, some measures more will be needed. But I think these are great first steps to encouraging, you know, in-law apartments, which can be built more quickly than large-scale, you know, developments perhaps. With $30,000, we estimate that maybe that would be six in-law apartments with every unit being really important, given the size of our town. I want to point out that on the price gouging ordinance, that it prohibits charging a price that exceeds by more than 10% of the price of the rental unit before the declaration of emergency. And, you know, 10% rate rental increase is significant, but it's better than unlimited for a start. And so I am really glad that the staff and Mayor Hundley and I were able to work on some of these ideas and get them moved forward now. Thank you.
Any other questions? At this time, I will go out to the public for a public comment. And remember, you get three minutes.
Good evening. Fred Alabach, 19550, 8th Street East. I'd like to compliment the Housing Subcommittee and staff for taking these steps. I think it's great to see this movement on the housing front on short-term and also the long-term issues of addressing the impact fees and maybe change to the inclusionary requirement. Sounds great. So I'm really happy to see those changes. I'd like to make a few comments about the rent and price gouging that, you know, on a yearly basis, people who are wage earners in the area median income level don't get a 10% raise per year. But investors who are looking at apartments as an investment, which is, you know, a pretty major strategy up here in the Bay Area, are looking to get a 10% to 15% return per year on their investments. And those people are buying properties right here in the city now and raising rents at that level. And so people, seniors and area median income residents of Sonoma can't keep up with that kind of price inflation. So, you know, I don't know. That's the kind of thing that makes people think about rent control or different ways to manage that for people who wages don't go up or who can't control that. So, you know, it's possible that there's some way to tie rent increases to increases in the area median income so that if people are guaranteed a return on profit or expect a return of profit on their investment, that people who are working can also expect to have some kind of increase or, you know, that that would be fair. And that's, you know, if you look at all the people who are out of work and the whole recent awareness that seems like of that the workforce is really important to the economy, then this is really important to keep these people. And ways that can be thought of to make their rents fair, which is like around 30% of their income of something that they can afford for $60,000 a year at a person, a single person, then that's fair. And if it's fair that people can get returns on their investment, it's also fair that people who work here can afford to live here. But again, thanks very much for your good work. And I look forward to more of your good work.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item?
Am I permitted another three?
Did you already speak on this item?
Not on this one.
Oh, well, you can, you actually get three per item.
Oh, good. Okay. It's like the ortho pack and double bonus. Richard Silver, 95 Bernhard. A couple of questions. On housing stock that would come new to the market in any number of these scenarios, if you don't have a rent stabilization ordinance in place blanketing the city limits, how do you set a fair price? If it's someone who had units and you're saying, "We're going to put a 10% cap." I lived in San Francisco, and we had a CPI cap, but that was on buildings before 1979. I think you're putting yourself in a difficult situation with new housing stock with no limit, no cap, and no timeframe, just to consider. I also think if you do the other thing, and it's on a case basis, you're going to open yourself up to litigation. It's no different than telling a landlord, "You just evicted someone who has a hair salon, and now we're going to put in a tasting room, charge $6,000 a month." He was paying $1,800, which has been happening, I've been told. Someone testified to that. So I'm concerned about that. How do you balance that? I'm not against rent stabilization. I don't call it rent control. It's rent stabilization across either fixed-income persons or whatever. But I'd like you to really consider that on your Subcommittee. How do you deal with that fairly as you're incentivizing people to have new housing and give them additional income? Second thing is, as you well know, any person who stays in a dwelling, other than a lodging or a lodger, for more than 29 days comes under the state tenant law protections. And therefore, they can maintain staying in that unit beyond what someone may wish them to leave. Then there's the whole legal process. Three-day notice, 30-day notice, 60-day notice, three-day unlawful detainer, et cetera. It becomes expensive across the board. I just want to make sure that you're considering those issues when you extend something for 45 days. Because anyone who's on day 30, 31, they come under the state of California protection for tenants. I'm not taking a position either way. I just want you to really consider, in doing good, making sure that others are treated equitably. I've been hearing and reading about people who are being evicted because I can get more rent. So I think those are all serious concerns that both the city and the county, and perhaps the state, need to look at. And how do we make it equitable and maintain the mix of people, like myself and yourselves, that make the city the wonderful place it is? Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Ransum?
Dave Ransum, I generally come from Santa Rosa to talk about Sonoma today. I'm coming to Sonoma to talk about Santa Rosa a little bit because I think it really fits here. You know, I was a few blocks from the evacuation zone, which was a few blocks from the fire. And we've lost, you know, as you well know, nearly 3,000 units in Santa Rosa and maybe more than 4,000 in the county. And I had a chance to watch the last Friday mornings event that Darius Anderson put together. I'm no great fan of Darius, but the event was very worth watching. And by the way, it's on, it's on the web. You can take a look at it if you want. You can fast-forward to see the presentation by the ex-FEMA director, James Lee Whit. And that was very sobering. Whit is a southerner. He talks slowly. And so you get a chance to think while he's saying what he's saying. And he was very serious about understanding that this is a very long-term project. He was involved with New Orleans. And he said, "You know, Katrina's 13 years ago, and it still isn't fixed. Expect five, six, seven years before we get back to normal, or what we thought was normal." The Economic Development Council was the next day. You were just referring to that. And the fellow, the economist who every year comes and gives his report said, "Look, seriously, you have to reveal quickly if you want to have your business come back." And then he said, "But it's going to take, if you want to do it in a year, twice as many construction work as you have. And if you want to do it in three years, half again as many construction work as you have." You put those two things together, Whit's thing and the economist from the, on Friday's thing. And we have a lot of people coming in to do a long, many-years work with the idea of just getting back to where we started, let alone going further. I'm very pleased to be able to hear, come here and say, "Great for what you're doing. Let's go. Let us get it passed." But I think we're going to need to be paying attention to a very much longer process than just this one year of extraordinary legislation.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Logan Harvey, 578 S. Madera. Wonderful to hear that there's more going on in the housing sector. It's good that these resolutions are being adopted. I think it's really important, as a previous gentleman stated, to look at average rents throughout the county and throughout the city when you're looking at this 10%. Because I've already seen things go up on Craigslist. They're brand-new. Rental's never been rented before. So if they're compared to what it was previously rented, they were asking for $10,000 a month, which is relatively high. Rents have increased, according to Washington Post and The Guardian, by 36% in the wake of the fires. That's on top of 44% since 2011. So serious, serious issue. One of the things to consider, too, is to sort of streamline the process for projects getting through Planning Commission, City Council, and things like that. I know we're electing a new councilor soon, but there's been a lot of kind of separate issues that have kind of gotten in the way of certain projects that is important to kind of consider. Definitely consider more, more steps to prevent people from evicting to get higher rents and from raising rent prices. And definitely increasing the amount of available units is going to be huge. And I appreciate that there's steps to do it. But yeah, long-term is going to have to be a focus. Really like to hear, because it's not often stated. We always hear about how the people at the top are helping the economy and making everything great, right? But it's really good to hear somebody actually say, "Yeah, the workers are a big part of it. And not having workers here is hurting our economy." And I think that's something that should be, you know, cannot be overstated and should be said as much and as often as possible. And thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and possible action. Who would like to get going?
Are there no questions or comments?
I have some comments, but let me see if anybody else has any comments first. Anybody on this side?
I just want to clarify that we're only going to spend $30,000 on this, correct?
Well, our discussion was, and I don't want to get ahead of ourselves for what's coming next with our impact fee, but it could be that this is some sort of pilot program, which, of course, we have plans to repay back to our emergency fund at some point. But if it was something successful, because we don't even know how many people are going to take advantage of it. But if it's something that's actually encouraging people, then there could be other sources of funding going ahead.
And that's my point. I just don't know if that's enough.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, when you think about a second unit and the engineer down on 2nd Street who's putting cottages out and offering those for sale at $120,000 to put in. What I, I would hope that you would think in your further discussions that maybe we find a way to, I think the county is starting to wave some of this... that maybe we find a way to, I think the county is starting to waive some of the sewer fees, it'd be great to figure out how we can do that, where we can encourage people to put those second units in.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I just don't know that thirty thousand is enough to...
Oh, well, we discussed that, the amount and the waiver, and also the state law, which I, for a different reason, had read a number of times, which I thought clearly said that the sewer fee was supposed to be waived, but there's a, perhaps that's not accurate. And then we came on the number of five thousand dollars as a way to waive the sewer connection fee, you know, limit the sewer connection fee charges and also the permit fee charges, and so the number, the pilot number being six units at thirty thousand dollars, but David could speak more to, we did have a discussion about which fees would be waived, how we came up with the five thousand dollars.
And, but the sanitation fee, I know we also talked about our sanitation district, which is a entity bigger than the city, are they doing the same thing for their fees? And then this would be water hookup and...
They are reducing the cost of their fees for accessory dwelling units, and fees, and it's quite true that for junior accessory dwelling units, there is no sewer or water connection fee, but for a larger accessory dwelling unit, then those fees do come into play, although at a reduced level. And so, for example, this five thousand dollar allowance for a junior accessory dwelling unit, they wouldn't, won't even need all of that, most likely, it would probably only, they would probably only need about twenty-five hundred.
Okay, great. I think it's great to get, this is a great start.
Yeah, but it is, is, as the mayor and council member Harrington stated, I mean, this, we want to learn from this program, and, you know, build on it and fine-tune it as we see how it goes.
Mr. Cook?
I just wanted to thank Mayor Hunley and Councilmember...
Harrington.
Harrington, there you go.
The new girl.
For taking on this issue. I do realize that the complex fire had, it was devastating to our area. One thing that has come out of the ashes is the ability to form these different subcommittees and take a look at it. Being on the council for five years, have a lot of people come here and say, what are you guys doing about housing? With knowing up here that we're doing a lot, there's a lot of stuff that happens behind the scenes that sometimes we just can't boast about up here, because things have to move in certain ways, and it takes time to, to move this. So I'm very happy I'll be supporting this tonight, and I'm hoping this is something that can continue on, we can take a look at this and, and dig it in a lot deeper. Housing, I've always said, is probably one of the most important facets to our whole city of Sonoma, but it's a very complex issue, which is going to take, you know, a lot of time to try to figure out, but I think so far, we're on the right path, and I want to thank you for that.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you all, so Amy and Mayor Hunley, because I know it was a lot of work, and so I appreciate all these facts were brought to us. So if there are no further questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sonoma establishing temporary housing measures to address displacement resulting from the Sonoma complex fire.
I could second it, but I also have a comment. Can I comment after I second it?
Yes.
So I just wanted to say, of course, we support these, I mean, I do, but that there are, with regard to the long game of all the additional housing, I don't think we have a plan to disband our subcommittee. There are additional ideas that we talked about, for example, pre-approved plans that people can know will be approved, so that they can build a unit, or clearing house for getting your credit check for people who have to apply multiple times, and a lot of other ideas which have been suggested here, and also, you know, for housing advocates. So we have talked about these, these are the first round of ideas we wanted to bring forward, but we absolutely understand that there's a lot of work to do on housing, and this is a first step. I will also be supporting all of these items today, and I would like to thank Councilmember Harrington and our planning director for taking the time to meet pretty regularly to talk about this, and we do have other exciting things on our list, but these were the ones we identified that we could jump on right now. And so I am happy to hear the council is in support, and if anyone out there has other ideas, please email them to any of us to consider. And like Councilmember Cook said, there has been things slowly creeping along in the background this whole time, but we just haven't been talking about them, because some of the projects had a lot of work to do before they'd come back, but it feels really good to be talking about housing and to be acting on housing, and I think that now that we have our wind, and the wind is in our sails on housing, I think that we can get a lot of great things done. School without ado. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Thank you.
And at this point, we will take a strict five-minute break.
We've got two resolutions.
We will take a break after we pass some resolutions. Can I ask one question of the city manager? And I, I don't know if you'll recall this off the top of your head, did we not set aside, didn't we, set aside, I think fifty thousand dollars for housing in our budget this year? Do you remember that?
It's in our reserve housing strategy.
Yes, I believe we, I believe we set aside fifty thousand, I'd have to go back and look, in our, as part of our reserve base.
So would it be possible later, if the, the thirty thousand is from the emergency reserves, to pay that back? I, my recollection is of fifty thousand.
Yeah, I, part of what we've talked about is we'll be doing mid-year budget adjustments once we know all the final numbers and what council wants to do, so as we move forward with some of these trial programs, we can do, we'll do a final kind of reconciliation and adjustments.
Thanks. All right, so we have two resolutions also on this item. The first is the rent gouging. Is there any discussion, or do we want a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution of the city, is it price gouging, though?
Yes.
Okay. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sonoma directing City of Sonoma Code Enforcement to identify and document potential instances of rent price gouging, and to refer credible complaints to the district attorney for enforcement.
I'll second that.
And on this one, I wanted to add the comment, which we had discussed, having our own price gouging ordinance, which cities can do, but in discussions with the district attorney's office, it is easier at her, for her office to enforce if they are focusing on one law rather than lots of different laws. So that is why we are instead, you know, using our resources to help her enforce and find people who are violating state laws. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Thank you.
And last, a resolution establishing a fee waiver program for accessory dwelling units.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sonoma establishing a program of fee waivers for accessory dwelling units and for temporary use permits associated with housing for displaced residents, and allocating thirty thousand from the disaster response fund for that purpose.
Second. Any further comments? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Was it everything on this list? At this point, we will take a strict five-minute break.
Underwriting is provided by Sonoma Paint Center, located at eight-one-five West Napa Street. For more information, you can go to sonopapaintcenter.com. And Larbury Automotive, located at one-eight-one-five-five Sonoma Highway. For more information, you can go to larbryauto.com.
I would like to bring this meeting back to order. Item 6.1 is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Raftellus Financial Consultants, Inc. for the City of Sonoma 2018 water rates study update in an amount not to exceed $74,645 and execute a professional services agreement with Colontano, Highsmith, and Watley PC to provide legal services regarding the City of Sonoma's proposed development of new water rates in an amount not to exceed $30,000. And lastly authorize a fiscal year 2017-18 water fund budget amendment of $10,000 in legal services to increase the appropriation from $20,000 to $30,000. And at this point, we will start with our city manager.
Good evening, Mayor Hunley, council members of the community. So we're very happy tonight to be here to take steps forward to update our 2014 water rate study and we will be moving forward calling this the 2018 study. As most of folks know, the City of Sonoma owns and operates a water transmission and distribution system here and our goal is to provide clear, consistent drinking water to our customers. As part of that, we basically have a separate water enterprise fund, separate from our general fund, and we track those costs separately. And we're coming forward now for a variety of reasons. One, you know, a number of agencies like this or like us are coming out of the drought, which has kind of created a lot of changes in what was known in 2014 versus where we are now. It's also impacted the city's water revenues. In addition, law and court cases create a moving target and there are different standards and a need to adapt and update and we'll talk more about that in particularly conservation tiers. And we've had some concerns expressed from members of the public and we've done some initial review and some things that the city needs to change and do differently moving forward. And so talking with the consultants over the last couple of months as we've put this together, Sonoma is not unique. Many communities are updating their rates for similar reasons, so we find ourselves in good company and looking forward to this process. So I want to briefly kind of go through just a little bit of history of what's happened in the most recent few months. So back in February, March, we did receive some concerns raised by Mr. Petlock about conservation tiers and transfers from the water fund to the general fund. As a new manager and with an interim finance director, we looked at this as part of the annual budget. And as we looked at some things, we brought in Mr. Michael Colontano, who is an expert municipal attorney, recognized for his prowess in water rates in Prop 218, and he is sitting here immediately to my left. So Mr. Colontano reviewed the 2014 water rate study and provided the council with some advice. And the council with that advice took some proactive actions, I believe it was back in June. So there were two transfers or reimbursements from the water fund to the general fund that were discontinued for the 1718 budget. In addition, the council sequestered funds for the last three fiscal years in two categories of transfers that had been done previously and basically put them in hold waiting the outcome of this study. And part of what we'll be doing in this study is reviewing the costs from what are the types of services that the general fund has that actually provide support to the water fund? And what are those? And what are the amount of accurate reimbursements that should go from the water fund to the general fund? The study will look at those transfers, or also called reimbursements, and make some decisions on those and we'll have that information to council. And at the end, it may be as we look at those overall reimbursements of how the general fund supports the water fund, we'll see whether those overall costs are higher or lower. But meanwhile, the funds for three years have been sequestered and that was a conservative action by this council in order to have accountability. And you also budgeted $100,000 in 1718 to update the water rate study and to look at this process. So since July 1, what staff has done based on council's direction is we've reached out to some seasoned experts. We did a request for proposal that was released and through that process, and we'll talk through that, we interviewed, I believe, five firms. And we are bringing forward two contracts tonight recommending to launch this process. The water rate consultant, financial firm that we want to use, rate-setting firm is a firm called Raftellus Financial Consultants. And then again, special legal counsel, Michael Colontano. I think it's important to understand why we bring these in and Mr. Colontano can speak a little more to this as well, but these are complicated rate-setting financial details that are wrapped within changing law. And so it has gotten more complicated over the past 10, 20 years and with that complication, we want as a city to have experts that are advising the council and giving us their expertise. And so as we looked, we wanted to make sure that we were bringing forward firms that do this all the time. This is their business. This is their expertise. So that we really brought the best information to this community so the council can make the best decisions. We've also added some components to the scope of work after we've talked with consultants. And one thing we really wanted to do was ensure that we had good transparency on this process and that there was plenty of times for both council and community to understand kind of the pieces of work that we're going to be moving forward. So the results we're looking for is we want sound analysis and research. We want legally clear and defensible and accurate rates and process. We want a good public process so the public understands where they can participate and that the information is clear. Again, these things are complex and I've heard complaints from members of the public in the past that some of the past studies that the city had done were complicated and it was unclear and tougher to understand. Part of what we looked for was a firm that was really good at explaining and good at providing some of the public information for both the council and the community. And then as part of with our new website and our ability to do some better public information, we'll have a separate page on our website. It'll be an initiative page that will list everything about the water rate study, have FAQs and be able to do more information there. Again, at the end result here, we want when council finally approves new rates and policies, we want both the council and the community to have comfort and confidence in that information. So I'd first like to introduce Michael Colontano. You know, I think just maybe an example and something to think about, there are a variety of attorneys, general law attorneys, and just like there are general practitioners, medical doctors, but on certain things, there are experts and you go to someone who has a specialty if you need something. And in the world of law, there are also specialists. And Michael's firm has a specialty and he is a specialist, thank you, in the world of water rates and frankly municipal finance. So he has practiced municipal law since 1989. He's currently the president of California Bar. He's argued seven cases in the California Supreme Court. And he really, one of his areas of focus is water rate litigation and Prop 218 interpretation. So I'm very comfortable and pleased that Michael's able to participate and be here tonight. So what he has provided is a budget estimate for what his services would cost and that is we put $20,000 in the budget and the, again, looking at what could occur, he will review a variety of the components and he can speak to that if council has questions about his role, but he will advise you as we go through this process with the ceiling price of $30,000. I'd also like to introduce Sue Casey on my far left. Sue will be introducing Raftellus, our financial consultants that we're recommending, and she managed that request for proposal process. I also want to introduce and announce that Sue has been, she's been with us since May as our interim finance director, went through recruitment process, and I'm pleased to have hired her right before the fire as our assistant city manager and minister of services director. So Sue's got experience both in cities and fire districts and the private sector and so appreciate all of her hard work on this. And so with that, I'll turn it to Sue and have her talk to you a little bit about the RFP process and talk about Raftellus and why they were selected. And then in addition, we will have Raftellus give a brief presentation so that you understand kind of where we're going to be moving. Sue?
Good evening, Mayor Hunley and council members. There we go. Okay. As the city manager previously mentioned, on August 15, 2017, we sent out a request for proposal for a water rate study to five rate consultants in the Bay Area and we also advertised it on our website until September 8 when the proposals will do. And we actually received six proposals and we got proposals from HFNH Consultants, NBS, Lesso Witch, and Singh, Willdan Financial Services, Hansford Economic Consulting, and Raftellus Financial Consultants. Staff was just extremely pleased with the caliber of the companies who responded to the city's request for a proposal. So after we got the proposals, each of the proposals were reviewed by staff. And I just wanted to note that, you know, when we're evaluating proposals for professional services, we don't necessarily take a look at the proposal that's the lowest price. We really take a look at and evaluate the qualifications, experience, and references of the firm and make a decision based on that. It's really important to make sure that we're making the best decision for this kind of work that we're studying. So it's not always the lowest price that's a factor. So after review, five of the firms were selected to interview and that was HFNH, NBS, Lesso Witch, and Singh, Willdan, and Raftellus. And unfortunately, Willdan couldn't make the interview or the time to meet, so they were not included in the interview process. And the interview panel consisted of three staff members, the assistant public works director from American Canyon, and the finance director from Santa Rosa. So after the interviews, we were unanimous in our decision to move forward with Raftellus Financial Consultants. And this decision was based on the firm's initial research and knowledge about the City of Sonoma, their enthusiasm for the project, their extremely well-organized and well-informed presentation during the interview, and of course their wide-ranging experience for water rate studies. Raftellus has the largest practice in California in the country specializing in financial and rate consulting for water, wastewater, recycled water, and stormwater utilities. And I also wanted to mention that following the initial proposal and after further staff discussion with Raftellus, staff did add two additional tasks, and I think Kathy, city manager, mentioned that. But these services were not originally requested in the RFP and so they were not quoted on by the other responding firms. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Sally Van Etten, who will be our project manager. And Sally comes to us, she has over 20 years' experience in the field, and she's going to provide a presentation about Raftellus and the proposed study process.
Good evening, council members, and good evening, members of the Sonoma community. My name is Sally Van Etten and I am representing Raftellus. I am the senior consultant in the Oakland, California office of Raftellus. As Ms. Capriola and Ms. Casey mentioned, I prepared a brief presentation for you tonight and hopefully it will give you a taste of our process. First of all, who we are, following on some comments already made, but also just a brief taste of the process and how we hope, if accepted our contract, to walk you through this process with us. We want it to be very interactive. Ms. Capriola has asked us to increase the number of presentations, workshops with the city council. And the point of that is to bring some light to what is admittedly a fairly complex study and process. So we want to make sure it's clear, but it will be fairly detailed. And just to give you a heads up on that from the very beginning. So again, today's discussion is who we are and the proposed study process. Raftellus is, as mentioned, solely focused on sewer, water, stormwater utilities. We don't have any other lines of business. We do rate studies primarily. We also do some management consulting and we also do connection and capacity charge calculations within those arenas. We have the largest practice in the nation on this type of work and the largest in California. We have over 70 financial consultants right now, so we have a huge depth of bench. We strive to provide not just excellent analysis and documentation, but also to communicate with clients and the community in a way, again, that kind of breaks down, which is admittedly a fairly complex process, in a way that people can understand, grasp it, and make decisions appropriate for their communities. We also are registered municipal advisor with the MSRB. That's a little something extra that we do. It pertains to SEC requirements. It has to do with situations where we might be suggesting debt financing for certain clients. So it's not something that everyone has, but it is something that our firm has invested Again, we have an awful lot of rate experience. This is just a partial list of rate studies that we've performed in California in the last three years. You'll see some names that hopefully you do recognize. In addition to several smaller communities, we also, for example, Northern California, work with Contra Costa Water District, East Bay MUD. I'm currently working with Alameda County Water District. Again, you can review, I believe you have a handout on this, you can review it at your Sanjay Ghar is going to be the project director on this project. Something else that Raftellus prides itself on doing is we have very strict quality control procedures in our office. We have a thorough review. We will have not only a project director, Sanjay, I will be the project manager. You'll see a bar over to the right there for Mr. Steve Ganyan. Steve is an engineer and he will be doing a technical review of all of the model work and of report as well. And then our lead analyst is most likely going to be Victor Smith. Victor is my colleague in the Oakland, Northern California office. So that's a brief overview of who we are and now into sort of the gory details of the rate process. We have a four-part rate process study. Rate-setting framework, the financial plan, the cost of service and rate design, and then the final rate adoption. And you'll see the following slides will kind of walk you through briefly again each of those four steps. This is the one that I actually like the best, which is the rate-setting framework. We always do this with staff, but in this case, we have been asked to expand it to you as the city council. So you will be actually participating in this particular exercise. And the balance beam that you see there, the balancing measure, is on purpose because we will be going through and asking you as a council to give us feedback on what your pricing objectives are for water rates in your city. And the reason we purposely use this balancing measure imagery is because it's not necessarily a linear progression. You will find that there are some objectives that the city has that may kind of counterbalance other ones that you have. We always work with industry guidelines. We follow the AWWA M1 manual for all of our rate-setting techniques and all the rest of the process that I'm about to describe. But within that framework, there's a number of ways that you can go with rates and rate structure. And our job is to listen to the client and to hear what their objectives are. And then, of course, with consultation of council as well, reflect back to you what we feel is the best rate structure that will achieve your set of objectives in the best way. So keep that in mind because you'll see me hopefully back engaging you all in a conversation about this particular slide.
The point Sally is making here is that these are competing objectives. A very fair system makes very fine distinctions, but it's complicated and hard to explain. A simple system that's easy to explain and understand is not as fair. So these are competing considerations and each community will strike the balance of those competing considerations differently.
So the second step is really looking at all the different pieces of your financial plan. If you're going to have a viable utility going into the future, you need to look at your revenue, but also your costs, expenses, O and M, capital, whether or not you have debt. There's also some conversation that needs to be had about financial policies, whether or not you have reserves, you want reserves, what your reserve targets are. Of course, if you take on debt, you will have some requirements around that. We build a budget essentially, a financial plan, and we look at a five-to-10-year timeframe when we build the plan. If you're just looking a couple of years out into the future, that doesn't give you enough information about all the things that may be happening, especially when you're considering capital improvement plans. Third step, and forgive me because it is a relatively complex process even if we do have, you know, cute graphics with the buckets, but the first thing we do is we look at all your costs from the budget and we categorize them into different buckets, if you will. So supply, base delivery, conservation costs if you have any, extra capacity, meter maintenance, After we look at the costs, we don't just stop there because part of doing rates accurately, and again, I'll defer to Michael if he has any other comments on this, but according to Prop 218, is that you have to allocate costs to customer classes appropriately. So we go through a process. So first, we look at the budget, put them into appropriate categories, and then we look at how those categories may affect particular customer classes because they're going to have different demands on different portions of those buckets, if you will.
So what we're talking about here is cost allocation and we do it in two steps. We allocate costs to the major functions of the utility and then we pass those costs through to customer classes based on the demands each class makes on a function. So for example, there are some costs that are general overhead like insurance and rent and the like, and you have to split those out across your functions in order to get them into rates in a sensible way. To give you one example, the customer service function is answering the phone, printing bills, answering questions. That tends to be higher for the residential class than for other classes based on price per unit of water because there's a lot more residents calling and using less water than big businesses using large amounts of water and calling. And different functions get expressed in different ways. If you don't do cost accounting for a living, congratulations. But if you don't do cost accounting for a living, you sort of assume that things have a known cost and I should pay the cost of water. There isn't a known cost. There isn't one way to answer this question. There's a range of right ways to answer this question and we go through this process to allow you to make choices on behalf of your community about how to do it.
And finally, and again, this is the next step in the rate design process, is as Michael alluded to, there's also some issues between how you allocate sort of your fixed costs and then your volumetric costs. And so we also evaluate how those costs are to be allocated out within those two areas as well. Again, I'm running through this pretty quickly. I hope to have the opportunity to walk you through it at a much slower pace that helps broaden understanding, but these are the basics of what we do when we do our cost-of-service analysis and design rates that are sustainable for your financial plan, but also are representative of the correct way to allocate costs to different customer classes. And that's very important. I've mentioned several times, but I will repeat, that the city staff has requested that we increase the number of workshops and engage you directly, you and the community, through this forum. So we're going to schedule them throughout the process, usually after key points, like after the financial plan, you know, getting the pricing objectives, going through the cost-of-service analysis. We will do that five times. We will also prepare a report. If Sanjay Ghar, the project director, were here, he would joke that it used to be, you know, we'd do a report and we'd send an email or a memo and then we moved to, or maybe a thicker memo, and now it's like, kaplunk, here's the book. And the point of that, though, is to provide an administrative record, which is a very important piece of the process in this legal climate. And you will, if you And you will, if you so desire, Sanjay would also comment that it's time reading to help you go to sleep, but you will be able to walk through the pages of the administrative record, the report, and actually have an explanation of every equation and every step in the process. And there's always, you know, you need to be able to go back and do the math yourself if so desired. And that's the point of the administrative record from our perspective, and there's other legal benefits to having a very good administrative record. We will also assist the city with preparing the Prop 218 notice when we get to that point, and Raftellus will also be here to represent the report and the work at the Prop 218 hearing. Again, we have a brief time for questions and answers if so desired. Okay? I will stand here for a few moments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we, I might just turn to Michael and see if there's any other comments that Michael had, and then we'll turn to questions from council. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to comment for a moment on why you find yourself where you are, which is the need to redo water rates at this time. And you're not alone. Most agencies, not close up to the mic, I wanted to just comment briefly on why you find yourself where you are, which is a city needing to go through a ratemaking process. Prop 218 was adopted in 1996. It was not made applicable to metered water rates until a Supreme Court decision in 2006. And we didn't get our first decision from the Court of Appeal explaining what the courts were going to require of a ratemaking process until 2011. Then you made rates in 2014, and I lost the Samon Capistrano case in 2015, which told us more emphatically and in more detail exactly how thick that book needs to be to satisfy judicial review. So the law is a moving target, and you made your rates last before we got a clear picture of what's required. So that's one reason you find yourself where you are. The second reason you find yourself where you are is we're just coming out of five years of drought, plus one wet year, and we don't know what nature is bringing this year. And what the drought brought us was higher costs to chase more scarce supplies and drive conservation, and lower revenues, because we sell water, and if you don't sell it, people don't buy it. But your costs are not variable. It's not like you don't have to go get more water when people use it. Your costs are paying a staff to maintain a piping system that's there all the time and needs to be maintained all the time. So when your revenues came down with conservation, which is great, your costs didn't. So you, like everyone else, have been burning off reserves, which is one of the reasons we have reserves. And now you're at a place where you really do need to refund your water utility, and we need to do it in a way that creates council confidence and public confidence and the ability to create opinion of legal validity in the rates that you're doing. The ratemaking that Sally and experts like her do has not changed all that much in light of all this. What's changed is the way we document what they do. Their thinking hasn't changed, but the way they have to document has changed rather substantially. So you're going to do a cost-of-service analysis, you're going to make rates, you're going to review your existing reserves. When you make rates, you're making a set of predictions about what your costs are going to be and what your revenues are going to be. And the only thing we know about predictions is that they're always wrong. We don't know whether they'll be wrong low or wrong high, but they will be wrong. And so it's not surprising that you may end up with more money than you predicted or less, and rate stabilization reserves are designed to make that manageable for your customers and for you. And so one of the things we'll do is reestablish what your benchmarks for reserves are and get you there over a reasonable period of time, if you're short, or burn off cash if we need to, and your case is not burning, it's getting you there. So this is a more complex process than it used to be. It is a more costly process than it used to be. Sally didn't have to put up with my reading her reports and critiquing them before, now she does. Because ratemaking is necessarily about good faith estimates, and we know you're going to be wrong, there's no duty to make refunds if you change your rates. Because, just because today's choices and estimates are different than yesterday's choices and estimates, doesn't mean that yesterday's choices and estimates were wrong. However, you've made a choice with respect to some of your reserves, to sequester funds, to put you in a position to make refunds of up to the three years that you've been reserving for, and that's because you made a public policy choice to be more transparent than the law requires of you. More power to you, that's what people elect you to do, but the law doesn't require it. You're doing more than you have to. So we're proposing a somewhat elaborate process that will take a little bit of time. This isn't going to happen in a week, in order to do it right, to make a good record, to involve the public in these policy choices. And you want to achieve rates that can certainly last the five years that the statute gives us before we have to do another hearing, and hopefully, when you do your next rate study, you're simply updating your model and not doing it all over again. So we should be making an investment that you'll get five, or 10, or 15 years return out of, but it is an investment that you're making. It will take some of your money and some of our time and some of your community's engagement to get there.
So at this one, there are any questions of council, and turning it back to you.
Any questions?
I'm really glad that you explained that, because I felt foolish. I was going to say somewhat, not as articulate as you, what you were just offering because of our two attorneys, it's a but-for thing. And that's the best I know about this, and we wouldn't be here had it not been for what you've just stated. Thanks.
Any questions?
I have one.
You got one?
Oh. I hope I didn't miss this, but I know it's in the packet, but for the city manager, would you mind just doing the, for those watching on TV or who haven't looked at the packet, the timeframe for this?
Yes, the plan is we'll do, we will be starting with a work session in early, there'll be five different work sessions. Plan is to start with those in January, I believe, and our goal is to be done by June. Could slip a little bit into July, but hopefully, we're looking at a six-month process to move through. So it will be a fairly compact process at this time. And then part of what we'll do is we will put the schedule up and put all that up on the website. As we go through the process, if we hear questions, we'll create some FAQs. You know, we can take clips from the video. So our new website gives us frankly, a whole new tool that we really didn't have before to make it easier for the public to watch this. If they can come to council meetings, great. If they can't, they can still be kept up to date.
Thanks.
Thank you. We might have questions later, but thank you very much for the presentation.
Sure. Thank you.
So if there's no questions from the council this time, I will take this out to the public for public comment. Please remember to tell us your name and your address, and keep it under three minutes. Anybody up?
Good evening, council, staff. Chris Petlock, 426 Napa Road, Sonoma. So I took some time to read all these proposals, very good, just a nerd like that. I just wanted to make a comment that the reasons that I think that we're here, and I do do cost accounting for a living, so, and I love it. But anyway, the first thing that raised a red flag for me was that when this rate study was done, that all five years of rates were passed at a single motion. So there was never any opportunity, at least in my mind, that anybody was ever looking back to see whether or not that those rates were performing as proposed or as thought. There was never really anybody looking to see, is this working? So again, five years, like it was said earlier, the only thing you know about an estimate is that it's wrong. The other thing is, once I noticed that, also, at that time, we had some of the highest rates in the Bay Area, in North Bay, and I think that's still the case. Again, we all buy from a similar utility, so why are the costs so much higher per, at least from, in my household? And then once I dug into it, you know, you start seeing things like transfers for rent, payment lieu of property tax, allocations for general fund support clearly listed in the rate study. All of these things were clearly not okay. So again, I think it's really good we're doing this. I like the belt and suspenders approach. You know, you've got a really great firm, you've got a really great attorney to help us out, make sure we got fair and equitable rates. That's more than anybody could ask for. Thank you so much.
Mr. Harvey?
Logan Harvey, 578 S.Madera. So just as a person that reads a lot and studies a lot about climate change and the kind of future of climate, not only worldwide and globally, but also here, I just want to state it so it's kind of maybe present in people's minds, do some research into what's predicted for here. There's a lot of predictions of heavy drought cycles, and then into big boom rain cycles, back into heavy drought cycles, back into big boom rain cycles. So I think it's going to be really important to look at allocating funds for conservation and keeping a focus there. I'm sure it already is something that you're thinking about, I know that it is, but I think it's something to really consider, especially in an area that may very well be and likely is quite drought-prone going into the future, and the future being in the next 20 years, really. So keep that in mind as you go through this process. Very, very, very cool to see more transparency in government. It looks like you've hired an excellent firm and an excellent group of people to be handling this. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and possible action. Who would like to get us started?
I certainly would. You know, when I read through this material, unfortunately, I missed the meeting. I'm a wonk, so I'm in heaven all the time with this stuff. I can't believe it. But I thought, jeez, this is a lot of money. But you know, we've been dealing with this for a while now, and it seems to just keep coming up like a bad relative, you know? So I'm just really happy we're at this place, because I think it's about, it's time for us to do this. And I just love the way it was explained, because it makes me feel far more happy, and I'm, I mean, comfortable, and I'm also glad that there are many cities, not just us, dealing with this. So that makes me feel even better. Thanks.
Mr. Cook?
Well, I'll be supporting this tonight, and I like the fact that we're going to be able to roll up our sleeves and do some work on this issue. So I want to thank, it seems like I'm thanking everybody, but you know, Kathy, I want you to let you know that I'm very impressed, because this is an issue, and I know that transparency in government is something that Sonoma, we thrive for, and by seeing this demonstration tonight, it'll continue that.
Mr. Edwards?
So I'm going to thank Kathy, as well as all the people that I've seen her bring in so far, have been, from my perspective, top quality. I work, I don't work in the financial arena, but I work with finances every day, and I appreciate the, what I see in the capabilities and the communication from the folks that are coming. But I also realize that we're, I don't have a real issue spending money to save money, and there's a good chance here that we may find that we haven't been charging enough for water, and we have to accept whatever outcomes we get. And so, and I'm willing to accept those responsibilities and pay the extra rates if we need to, or not pay the rates if they change. But, and I agree with Mr. Harvey, things are going to be changing. Being in the farming industry, we face droughts, we face too much rain, we've got a lot of issues to work with, with our recent fires and moving water through this valley, and then the recharge that we talked about, recharging from the Rush River into our aquifer here. There's all those factors that I think we need to add into this conversation, so I appreciate it, and I will be supporting as well. Thank you.
Well, first, I think, you know, I'm going to recognize Chris Petlock for bringing this up. It hasn't always been described in the way I would like, but I do want to acknowledge that you brought this issue forward and have stuck with it, which is very important. And I think that a lot of the issues that have been brought up, we are dealing with them, there will be transparency. I am happy that this firm has been selected with the thought being that we're going to do a lot of public information and participation, so that we don't, I know there's been a fear that we would just come up with a rate that sort of magically turned out to be the exact rate that we would like it to be, and I don't think anybody has that in their mind, and there's no preconceived notions of what the rates should be, and that'll, all the information will be publicly disclosed. So I think that's really important, and I, you know, second what council member Edwards said, you know, instead of being penny wise, pound foolish, and doing the study twice and not having what we need, I think we should just go with people with deep expertise and experience in this field and get the best possible rate study, and this is, in many senses, a new day for us in Sonoma on this front, and we might as well start off in the best way possible. So the timeline of the six months, I think, is a reasonable, it sounds pretty fast, timeline in terms of getting things done. And then some of the other questions with regard to how did we get to our current rates, I know that Mr. Petlock has those questions, and I think along the way, we're also going to look at that and answer those questions as well. So I think the whole issue of the water rates past and future is going to be dealt with. So I support this. And I will also be supporting this, and I appreciate the presentation, and I am encouraged because I feel like we're going to be learning more about how a water utility works than we ever thought possible, and it makes me feel like it's not going to be quite as painful as it first sounded. But just more generally first, I think that right now, even sort of nationally, there's this sort of brewing distrust of governments kind of all around us, and I think it's, you know, inevitably trickles down to the local level, and I think it's our responsibility to build trust and public confidence with all of you out there. So this is all of us seeing something that we think that we could do better. I think the world has changed a lot in the last three years. You know, back in 2014, three of us were campaigning, and one of the biggest issues was the drought. That's all we ever talked about was drought. And three years later, you know, the conversations are totally different. And so now we have a very different council, we have a different city manager, we have Sue Casey, and other people on the team, and I think it's a great opportunity to do this and do it right. And I look forward to all the things that we're going to learn. And another, one more note about water rates is that, you know, probably, some people in the city don't really think about their water bills, it doesn't really, they don't really feel the effects of it. But there are some people that their water bill, especially in the summer, can be really painful. And so I think that whether it's making sure people are paying exactly what they need to, or on the flip side, if it's, the city is getting exactly what, or water utility is getting exactly what it needs, because, you know, this is a thing that we have to provide to the city, and that also needs to be done right. So I feel very confident about both of our new people in the room, and I appreciate you being here. So with that, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. I hope I'm in the right one. A resolution of the city council of the city of Sonoma authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Raftellus Financial Consultants, Inc., for the city of Sonoma's 2018 water rate study update in an amount not to exceed $74,645 plus expenses, and execute a professional services agreement with Colentano Highsmith and Watley P.C. to provide legal services regarding the city of Sonoma's proposed development of new water rates in an amount not to exceed $30,000, and to authorize a fiscal year 2017-18 water utility fund budget amendment of $10,000 in legal services, general ledger number 51062001-310-50310, to increase the appropriation from $20,000 to $30,000.
I'll second that.
All right. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Agamati?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Henley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is item 6.2, consideration, discussion, and possible action to, number one, adopt a resolution removing current planning commissioners in order to implement new council commission appointment policy, and two, make appointments to the city of Sonoma Planning Commission using the new process as approved in the council commission appointment policy. So just as an order of things, first, we're going to get the background from our city manager. Councilmembers can ask questions. We're going to go out to the public for public comment, we're going to come back, and then we're going to explain the actual process that we're going to going to go through. And then, and that's it. And it'll be a piece of cake. And we're all going to get through this together. So with that, I'll pass it over to our city manager.
Great. Mayor Hunley, council members of the community, as most of you are aware, the council has had a number of conversations about redoing our commission appointment process. And so tonight, our focus is on the planning commission and to move forward and implement these changes. So one of the key changes for the planning commission is that the council will be appointing of the seven members, five of them will be appointed with each of you making an individual choice. There will be two at-large members that you will be voting as a group and approving, and there'll be one alternate. And within the at-large, one of those at-large members may be a member of the Sonoma Valley. So we had, I think, 14 individuals who submitted applications. And so what we've got is a process that we're recommending that you do. And so, yes. So the first, the first thing to, first action you will need to do is you'll have to adopt a resolution first to remove all the current planning commission members in order to implement the new policy. And then we will move through the process for you to appoint the revised planning commission. And so I'm happy to answer any questions of the council, do public comment, and then maybe we can come back through and talk through the individual process. What we have is on the camera, if we can turn it on. What we'll do is kind of basically do this in time, real time, and show, waiting for that to come up, hopefully for all of you members of the public here.
It's kind of blurry.
Okay, not in focus. We can fix that.
Do we have one more of these sheets? For... All right. So are there any council questions at this time?
So we do poll a comment, and then we can kind of talk through a little more detail of how the process will work.
Yep. So at this point, we'll be going out to public comments for this entire item. So if you have something you have to say about Item 60.2, this is your opportunity to be heard. Please say your name, address, and keep your comments to under three minutes. Do we have any public comments on this item? Really? Wow. All right. Bringing it back. So...
So the first action would be to adopt the resolution to remove the current planning commissioners in order to move forward and do the next piece.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution removing the current planning commissioners in order to implement new council commission appointment policy.
Second.
Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So the way this process staff is recommending you do is...
Are you going through the specifics, or is that something I'm going to do?
I'm sorry, you are. If you would like to do that piece, talk that through. Sorry, thank you.
Well, I just want it to line up with what's in my head.
Okay.
Because that's what I'm going to do. So there's going to be two parts to this with a very brief pause in the middle so that we can regroup. The first thing that's going to happen, have we drawn our order? So first, we are going to have an order drawn, and we are going to then go in that order and announce who our direct appointments are going to be. And so after we get through all five of us, we are going to take a brief pause because that means that those names are then ineligible for the other seats. And then we will come back, and should I explain that part when we get there?
I think it'd be helpful for folks to understand the full process.
Sure. All right. So, and just keep in mind, this is our first time doing this, and it's going to be great. But there might be some things that you notice might be a little sticky. And so although we can't direct council to do anything at this time, they can take notes of our comments if there's something in it that doesn't quite make sense. But, so the seats that will be left will be our two at-large seats. One is out-of-city optional and then an alternate. And so we are going to keep our order, but we're going to start with the number two on the list, and then we're going to go through and reveal what our slate looks like for those three seats. And so that is why we have this handy chart, is so that after everybody reveals who their preferred slate is, we can look and see if there is a majority consensus on any of the proposed commissioners. And if there are, then we can entertain a motion to nominate that person, and they can be confirmed. If there is not a majority, then we will go back out, we'll start with number three on the list, and we'll go through it again to see if anybody wants to make any adjustments. And again, we're looking to get to number, to at least a majority on these to nominate for. And one thing to keep in mind, see, like, as, I think this will unfold as we do it, but we do have the option, if we can get to, you know, six or seven planning commissioners, but we're stuck on the alternate, we don't have to fill all of the seats today. If we can't get to a majority consensus on all of the seats, and that seat can go to the spring, and then we can just put it in with a spring round. Did I forget anything?
Yeah, so by this, what Mayor Hunley means by the spring round is, again, this new process for the rest of your Group B commissions, we will be advertising in December and bringing those back for council to make decisions through the similar process in January. And so if we needed, it'd actually be winter. So if we needed to go back out and solicit more applications, if you're for planning commission, that could be an option if you're not able to come to consensus. The only other piece I want to, comment I want to make, I think you did a nice job, Mayor Hunley, thank you outlining that. The only other comment I want to make, having seen this in other locations, and I know our city attorney has seen this process in other jurisdictions as well, sometimes it just, it, sometimes it's a little messy, okay? Because you, you have to work through sometimes, and sometimes councilmembers may say, well, you know, I'm, I'd like to change my vote to this, or, so this process is a bit iterative. It doesn't mean it's broken, it's just the way it works. Because all of you have to lay out your votes in public in order to meet the requirements of the Brown Act. So we'll work through this with you, but I just, for all of you and for folks watching, sometimes it can, it can look, it can look a little messy, and sometimes it just, it's really clear. So we'll work it through.
All right. So at this time, shall we draw our order?
It's exciting.
Number one.
It was bingo. All right. Mayor Protem Edwards? And Councilmember Aggermonte? Which would be Councilmember Cook.
All right. So we have our order. It's going to go Harrington, Edwards, Hunley, Aggermonte, Cook for this first round. So Ms. Harrington, are you ready to reveal your planning commission appointment?
Yeah, a lot of fanfare. So for my selection, I'm going to select Kelso Barnett. He's been a member of the Design Review Commission for the last seven years. He's born and raised in Sonoma. He has an MBA from USC and also a Masters of Real Estate Development from USC. He's a graduate of UC Berkeley, and he has been involved in many, many community efforts over the years, and I think he'll do an excellent job.
All right. Mr. Edwards?
So my selection is going to be James Cribb. He's led the planning commission for the last while and been consistent. I was part of his appointment team when he was originally appointed, and I'm happy to select him.
And me, I am going to go with Jim Bohar, who was my nomination earlier this year. He has a background in commercial real estate, historic preservation, and I think that he has done a great job in the first, his first few months on the council or on the planning commission, and I look forward to having him still on there. And next, we have Ms. Aggermonte.
And I'm going to go with Robert Felder. My reason, of course, is that he has experience, and I've heard our former planning commissioners say that's what you need on this commission, and that's why I'm nominating him.
And Mr. Cook?
I'll be nominating Ron Wallander. He was the first selection when I was mayor of Sonoma, and I think he's done a great job, and I look forward to him being on the planning commission.
All right. So we have our five, and so at this point, we are going to take a two-minute recess.
Underwriting is provided by Sonoma Paint Center, located at 815 West Napa Street. For more information, you can go to sonopapaintcenter.com. And Larbaray Automotive, located at 18155 Sonoma Highway. For more information, you can go to larbarayauto.com.
Three available positions. Two are what we are calling at-large. One of those has the option of being someone who lives in Sonoma Valley, as defined by our policy, but it could be someone that's in the city. So one seat is city or valley. The second seat has to be someone that's in the city, and the third is going to be our alternate, which is someone that has to live in the city. So I am going to suggest that the order is going to be city at-large, out-of-city optional at-large, and then alternate, and then we're going to go in order and basically list those three. Because of not having them all together, I think seeing, because between the three, I think it's easier to see if someone, if one name is like almost to a majority in the at-large seat and almost to a majority in the alternate, then there's like sort of room to negotiate there. Or do you think that it'd be simple to go one by one?
No, I was going to, I think I was mishearing you. So...
Well, I was just going to say, when people give their choices, so we know what they're talking about.
Yeah, I think what, what we want to do is we want to mark them. So if, so as a council member, if you have two at-large and one alternate, your at-large, one has to be from Box One. Your at-large second could be from Box One or Box Two, meaning could be from, could be a city resident, it could be a valley resident. And the alternate has to be from Box One or the city representative. So as you tell us, we're going to mark them as L's are going to be at-large, and then the A's will be alternates. So each council member, when you give us your nominations or who you would like to see, we will mark them that way, and then we'll see if there are consistencies and some alignment. Okay? So the second person who I believe since Councilmember Harrington went first, it's Mayor Protem Edwards. You have the first opportunity to give us your three nominations.
Okay, my nominations are Linda Carrato, Robert McDonald, and Carol Jansen.
So can you specify which spots you're filling? Or, because you have between...
I would say, I would say Linda as the alternate, and Robert as the at-large, and Carol Jansen at-large.
I'm sorry, Gary, just can you say one more time for me? I apologize.
Yeah, so alternate, Linda Carrato, Robert McDonald at-large, and Carol Jansen at-large.
Okay. Thank you. The next individual would be Mayor Hunley.
I can do this if you want to do that. For my out-of-city optional at-large, Veronica Naples. For my in-city at-large, Jack Wagner. And my alternate, Linda Carrato.
Okay, next would be Councilmember Aggermonte.
So my at-large, that's in-city? Is that the first?
Correct.
The same person?
No.
Can't, I'm running out of people.
Oh, wait, as Felder or someone that they just said?
Someone that they just...
Yes, 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 yes.
So in-city then would be, is that the alternate?
You have, you have one, so you have, you're two at-large. They can both be in the city, or you can have one in the city and one in the county, or one in the valley. And then you have your alternate that has to be in the city.
Okay, Jack Wagner in the city. I have McDonald and Carol Jansen.
Who is your alternate?
Carol Jansen.
Can't be Carol, can't be Carol Jansen. She has to be one of your at-large. The alternate has to be someone who, based on the policy the council wrote, has to be someone who lives within the city limits. And it has to be a voter within the city limits.
Okay, so I said Jack Wagner and Robert McDonald?
You did.
Did I? Okay, so at-large, is that what you're saying? At-large?
It's just your, Carol can't be your alternate.
Okay, Jack Wagner. Yeah. Is yes.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Cook?
For the out-large would be Robert McDonald. For the alternate would be Linda Carrato. And for the valley resident would be Carol Jansen.
And last, we have Ms. Harrington.
Okay, so, so for the at-large, Bob McDonald. For the other at-large, Veronica Naples. And then for the alternate, Jack Wagner.
So based on this, so looking to see where at least a majority lines up, it looks like we have three people... It looks like we have three people who have Linda Carrato as an alternate. We have four people who have Bob McDonald as an at-large. And we have three people who have Carol Jansen as an at-large. So does that mean that we have filled our seats on the first try?
Yes. So you would do?
If some, can, do you want separate motions or just all together?
All together, that's fine.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to be to appoint and just name each of those folks.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to appoint? Do we have to do it one by one or all together? Kelso Barnett, Jane.
Oh no, we don't, it's only the three that we just did. Those are already in. Mr. Cook?
You may borrow mine, council member.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that Robert McDonald is a member of the out-large for planning commission. Linda Carrato is a member as, of the planning commission as an alternate. And then Carol Jansen is a member of the planning commission at-large, resident, or valley.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, is there any further discussion on this item? I will note that this is also has been a long, bumpy journey and I think that, um, that we put a lot of time and thought into it. And I appreciate all the feedback along the way and I look forward to seeing what is ahead for our city. Can I roll a couple, please?
Yes. Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye, thank you.
Everybody good? Item six point three. Hear city council subcommittee slash liaison reports and information from staff on October fire recovery initiatives and provide any additional feedback and direction on items related to fire recovery. And we will begin with our city manager, if you are ready.
So Mayor, councilmembers, this is our opportunity for reports. Maybe if we could start and talk about our recognition and appreciation. I'd like to thank Councilmember Aggermonte and Councilmember Harrington, Lori Decker and Lisa Jansen, who were our core committee members, the staff that supported our councilmembers. And just, I think there was a lot of collaboration, brainstorming and work and so we'll turn it to the two of you. Happy to have had Saturday evening, so.
Well, I think everybody here was there, but, um, I just wanted to say that during the planning, we talked about how we didn't want it to be about politicians making speeches. And we wanted it to be really heartfelt and an opportunity, like a real community experience. And it's sort of intangible about how to do that, but it just was really clear that that's what happened. And so, you know, thanks so much to everybody who was part of making it happen because the artwork and the music and just being with the friends and, you know, everybody else. And then hearing Brett and Rob and Steve Aker speak from the heart, it was just amazing. And it was everything we could have hoped it would be, I think, so.
I'll second that.
It was, it was amazing, well, I won't use the comments I said in the beginning, those are sort of rude. So, but I'm glad that it ended up the way it was because it was such a joyous occasion. And I know we were criticized for something, some of the things that we wanted to achieve. But I think that, that whole time was filled with something that was really precious that I will never forget. Because originally, as I shared that evening, seeing people who were really worried, scared on the plaza that evening. And then this night of celebration was absolutely glorious. It'll be one of my fondest memories of living here in Sonoma.
Edwards?
I just want to add to the entire event. I think it was really important for, um, the funding that this council gave to that project. Because I think it's so important that the deep mental health issues that are, have, are coming from the fire are just starting to land. I know for myself, I was probably more emotional than I've been during the entire first 12 days or 10 days of the fire, whatever we did. And it really didn't hit me until that day. And to have my children there and, and so on, it's, I think it was so important to have that, to have the community come together. And I really appreciate that it wasn't us talking and politicians talking, that it was the fire department, the police department, the sheriff. And I just, I really appreciate that and how you guys put that together, so thank you.
And I will reiterate that I think you guys went next level on this one. And I think that the, the concept and the theme was beautiful and that people just took it and ran with it because it was so perfect. And all of the art projects that people did and I just love the way that the plaza was decorated. And I kind of figured people would show up because that's what Sonoma does, but with the weather, you never know. But it was a picture-perfect day and at least the, while, right after the first part was over, I asked our police chief how many people were there and he estimated 1,500. So I would say that's a pretty good party that you guys did. And it was just really nice seeing Sheriff Rob down here in Sonoma, who I learned when the city of Sonoma first started contracting with the sheriff, Brett Sackett and Rob were our deputies here covering the city of Sonoma. So it was perfect, I think you guys did a great job. Anything you want to add, Mr. Cook?
I just want to thank both for, it was, it was, kind of gave me a little aha moment, watching people just kind of gather together. And like Council, or Vice Mayor Edwards said, it is very important. I think the mental health issue of all of our residents, including myself, it was a good way to, to have closure of one bad disaster, but the coming together as a community again. And I also want to thank the Fairmont for the pancake breakfast that, that they had that next Sunday morning. And once again, everybody involved.
Cool, so next on our list, anything from our fundraising liaison?
Well, not an awful lot has gone on, but I know that there's an awful lot of money being raised. My only caution is to make sure that you're actually giving to a, to a recognized nonprofit. Because there are a lot of things going on out there, there would be collecting money for different causes. You don't know if you're going to really be giving it to the right cause. And also if you're going to be getting a tax deduction and a receipt, who knows, you know, with some of these. So my suggestion is to be just really cautious and check these organizations. There's a good place to go, GuideStarGot.com and that'll give you a bona fide information about nonprofits. But I think it's wonderful, I can't believe how much is going on. The one that really caught my heart, that doesn't involve anything, was up in Santa Rosa where they had a garage sale where people who were just, who had lost their home just came and they could pick out everything that they needed for free, which I thought was pretty nice. I saw a couple of paintings I liked when I saw them, but they were, it just, it was such a wonderful gesture. So I think I'm just so proud to be a part of Sonoma County.
Next up, we have our business tourism and economy subcommittee with myself and Councilmember Cook. I'm going to kick this off.
Um, you know, just the continuation of, you know, shop local. I think that, you know, it's a very important time, we're waiting for a lot of the numbers to come back. But, you know, I think the main message is, you know, shop local and support the local businesses.
And yeah, it's been, it's been interesting to see this group meet every week or every other week since the disaster. Because in the beginning, you know, there's a different focus and now people are starting to look more long-term. But there's, for businesses, for any business in the area that has been remotely affected by the fires, like whether it was loss of revenue, interruption, anything, there's some deadlines coming up that you have to register. So I suggest you register and then, then figure out if there's anything that could be done. But, um, like the biggest, um, effect that I'm hearing is just the two weeks off or maybe even up to four weeks because not being able to get to their business. And then just the effect it's having on employees who are displaced. So there's a lot of businesses that are feeling the effects, but like I said about the, or maybe it was earlier, I said at the economic forecast breakfast, the economist went through a lot of different disasters and most of them, he said that things snapped back together in about a year. But it did depend a lot on how quickly housing was rebuilt where it was lost. And that is the reason that Hurricane Katrina is in the water because that did not happen and a lot of people left. But all of the different groups, we meet with the Venters and Growlers Association, the Visitors Bureau and the Chamber. And they are all off fervently doing things. And I think the Chamber said that they have talked to, this was November 9th and they have been on foot, they've talked to over 250 businesses. And they were focusing a lot on Glen Allen and Kenwood when they did that. Anything you'd like to add? Next up is our environment, county and state parks, agriculture, open space, erosion control liaison, Mr. Cook.
And I would like to hear from city staff.
I'll go first, my name is Chris Peg with the City of Sonoma's Public Works Department. Last time I was here, at the last council meeting, I had mentioned that CAL FIRE has convened a watershed emergency response team in response to this fire. Just to recap, a watershed emergency response team, or WERT, is an interdisciplinary team of fire specialists, geologists, and hydrologists that are convened by CAL FIRE. And what they do is assess risks to life and property from flooding, landslides, or debris flow from burned fires following a fire. At the last meeting, they had not put all of their findings into a report. However, I mentioned that it was going to be available on November 15th and it was made available online on that date. I won't get into all of the arcane contents of the 200-page report. I'm just going to tell you what it means to Sonoma. One of the things I'd mentioned was that they model the relative increase in stormwater runoff from burned subwatersheds throughout the valley. The relative increase meaning that they know that for a given amount of rainfall, we expect this much runoff and potential flooding. After the fire, they expect there will be an increase. And now we know that the increase in the Nathanson Creek watershed, which is the only burned sub watershed that flows through the city of Sonoma, has increased or is modeled to increase by nine percent this winter. In preparation for that, the WERT team has made several recommendations to local agencies on how we can better prepare for that increase. The first and foremost recommendation that they make is to bolster the radar that's used to detect incoming weather. And they've reached out to the Water Agency and NOAA and they're actively working on installing a temporary X-band radar station on Sonoma Mountain that'll give us advanced warning when storms are coming in. In addition to that, with that advanced warning, we can deploy our public works crews to patrol. And we've identified the, the high-risk areas and we can put roadblocks to prevent, you know, folks from entering hally hazard areas. And we can also push out notifications on NICSIL or the city's social media to let folks know well in advance that there, there could be hazard in the city or in the areas surrounding the city. Outside of the WERT, some updates I have are that the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Sonoma Ecology Center will be monitoring the runoff for toxic constituents. The only locations where they're actually going to be doing that monitoring are well upstream of the city in Glen Allen and Kenwood communities. So there's, there's relatively little worry, I think, for any of those kinds of water quality impacts to be felt in the areas that are near to the city. Last update I have, the city has made free sandbags available at a rate of 10 per resident at City Hall. And we've staked sand at Depot Park. So the, the residents should be able to at least defend their homes if we have any, um, any predicted large rainfall events this winter. And as we get more information, I'll look forward to providing that.
Can they pick them up now or are they stacked somewhere or is that when the time comes?
They're available at City Hall right now.
City Hall? Mr. Cook?
And I've been keeping in touch with the overlook stewards and they're happy. I feel like being a liaison, you're kind of the complaint department. And I haven't gotten any complaints, so I want to thank public staff for, you know, the good work.
Thank you for being our liaison. I'll just add a couple more comments. Chris has been our lead, Colleen Ferguson, your public works director, city engineer. And Chris has been our lead representative on this WERT. And following up on the final report that we just got from their work, one of the things that came out of that is identification that Chris noticed that in an area that the WERT predicted has a higher potential for landslide since the fires, we have a water line going down a steep hill, so we are following up on that with CAL FIRE to see if we can get some assistance with erosion protection for that steep slope with our water line under it. And so, just so you know, we are following up on that. I've been engaging in these countywide conversations about, just concerns about after the fire and winter coming and what everyone's doing to get ready for that. And there's twice a week meetings, response to storm activity is what they're called. And they're high leveled throughout the county. At the last meeting, they said that the county EOC closed last Friday, they had been open the whole time, but they finally closed. And CAL FIRE has had a lot of resources in Sonoma County doing this watershed protection work. And they did, specifically protecting values at risk that were identified. And this water line is now considered one of these values at risk, so, and following up on that. But there's been a lot of work on that, the resources are starting to diminish now as far as the CAL FIRE boots on the ground and doing the watershed work. There is a non-competitive hazard mitigation grant opportunity out now and so we're tracking that, looking for things that might benefit Sonoma that would be a good fit for this grant opportunity. The deadline was going to be November 30th, it was just extended to December 22nd. So we have a little more time to identify potential projects for this grant. And those were the main things I wanted to let you know about these countywide activities that are going on.
Thank you. Anything else? Next up, we have our housing short-term and long-term subcommittee. Anything you want to add? I feel like we've done a lot today. At our last meeting, we talked about our NEXUS study and our housing impact fee, which we talked about a while ago. But we will be talking about it again soon, perhaps as a study session, because as you might remember, it was very meaty. But the result of that, if it does pass, is that we will have a source of funds that can start being targeted towards housing. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Goodison?
No.
And last, we have our nonprofit coordination liaison, Gary Edwards.
Well, as I, I'm always working in nonprofit. The, I don't really have much of an update since last time, but I did meet with Eric and Kate Still, the owners of Sonoma Market, who were so helpful in this entire event. And we're going to get together and actually talk about future opportunities with all of their resources. Redwood Empire Food Bank is still completely active with the St. Leos and that's going to continue until there's no longer a need, along with their other five distribution centers. And Rotary is still moving along, we had a moose. still moving along. We had a moose, wasn't really a fundraiser, it was just an appreciation event down there as well. And Ron Lawson made-
Steak and garlic, right?
Well, yeah, it was, it was tri-tip and garlic. And it was, and everybody still smells like garlic from that event. Thank you, Ron. But just continuing, and the, the Sonoma Strong shirts are, they're continuing to sell, and it's just, it's pretty amazing. So to answer, if you, if you need a really good nonprofit where 100% of the money goes back to the victims, it's Rotary. Thank you. 110%.
And that is all we have to say about that. We're moving on to... Item seven, Councilmembers' Reports and Comments. Wait, nope.
Need to come back to 6.4.
Item 6.4, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Adopt a Resolution to Adopt a Special October Fires Water Bill Adjustment that would allow the October 2017 water bills, upon customer request, to be adjusted to apply the Tier 1 rates to water usage for above normal usage due to the October fires. And for that, we will be, again with our Public Works Director.
Mayor Henley, councilmembers, almost done with the meeting, thank goodness. So as, as we all know, the October fires impacted the Sonoma community in many ways. The city of Sonoma ourselves, in the city limits, avoided the damage and devastation that was experienced by so many other communities that were affected by the fire. But some city of Sonoma water customers responded to the fire hazard by using a lot of water at home to try to protect their properties from the threat of fire. Some evacuated and returned home to find that a hose or sprinkler had been left on. Some found, after they were evacuated and came back, that CAL FIRE had done some fire prevention activities on their property and had broken some of their personal water facilities, and a lot of water had been used while they couldn't be there. So varied responses, but we did end up with quite a few customers with much higher than normal water bills for October. So we read the meters, as we always do at the end of the month, sent out the bills at the beginning of November. Have had 16 customers, as of last Thursday, had contacted the city, requesting that their water bills be adjusted, because their water usage was much higher than normal because of the fires. At least 10 more customers were identified by our water billing staff as likely ones that would contact the city if there was an opportunity to have an adjustment. There may be many more out there. These were just the ones that really stood out from a quick review of the water customers' bills. And other, other communities are also looking at adjustments to water bills. So we're not alone having this issue. So what staff is recommending that council consider is to adopt this special one-time October fires water bill adjustment. So under the proposal, by January 1st, water customers would request an adjustment, much like they do with the existing leak adjustment policy. So they'd fill out a form, and we have a draft of, what the form could look like, it's very much like the water leak adjustment form, but it's specific to the October fires. So people would request an adjustment using this form. City would determine their normal water usage based on 12 months of water usage. Any water used above that for the month of October would be considered fire water usage, with an explanation that it was really for the fire, not just because they want some money back. And then, instead of billing, often they got out of Tier 1 and into Tiers 3 and 4, using more water than normal. We would adjust their bill to charge for that extra water used, or, you know, above normal water use at the Tier 1 rate, which is a much lower rate than a Tier 3 or 4 rate. And there are, for the customers who, oh, they would still get charged for their normal water usage. So the regular service charge and the regular charge for however much their normal water usage is, would still apply for that month of October. And they would still get charged for the water they chose, chose to use to protect their homes, but at the lower Tier 1 rate. Now, for the customers who didn't choose to use the water, but CAL FIRE drove through their property and they ended up with damaged water facilities, we would not charge them for anything above their normal water usage for that month. So they still get charged their normal water usage, but no charge for the water specific to the fires. That makes sense. And then, if anybody does, if we do learn, so far, as far as we know, none of our water customers lost their homes in the fire. But it's possible that someone was living in an outbuilding or something like that, and we just don't know about it yet. But if there was anyone who is getting water bill from the city that didn't lose their home, we're recommending that we not bill them for that month of October. And that's the basics of the staff recommendation. And I am happy to answer any questions that council has.
I have a couple of questions. One, so if someone's home was destroyed, then it makes sense not to charge them. But what about if someone was displaced for like the entire month of October? Because firstly, evacuations, and then, I don't know, they're in like a hard-to-get-reach place, or so they like weren't even there the whole time? Is it still going to be based on their normal usage if they weren't there?
They, they would get billed for whatever water they used, which was probably not much water, if they weren't there.
And where's the money coming from?
So it, from, from a, a water system management standpoint, you know, we buy water from the Sonoma County Water, and so that's where, most of our water comes from. And, and we don't get a break on paying them for the water. But when you look at the, the water supply in a large sense, if people use a lot of water on a consistent basis, it has a big cost impact on our water supply system. We have to get more supply. We have to increase the pipe sizes to be able to move the water around and all that. Which is why, when people use a lot of water, they get billed more, incrementally more, for using more water. But with this being a one-time, hopefully, event, where just this one time, people use a lot of water, we don't have to look at upgrading the system or anything like that to satisfy this water demand. So charging the Tier 1 rate covers our costs. There, we don't have to come up with any money, really. It's, we're not charging them more than we should for the water, is really what it is.
So it's covering our direct costs of the direct water? I mean, some of those overhead pieces, et cetera, aren't covered again, but this is a one-time, completely anomaly situation? So we're not talking about backfilling, we're just covering, talking about basically covering some of those direct water supply costs. And then, and again, we are asking people to fill out and actually apply. You know, again, I do think that there is, it's, how much is more will be in the eye of the beholder, because some folks, I mean, as we look at numbers, we've identified maybe 26 folks, no doubt. If, you know, if someone's paying $20 more, for them, that may be above a norm. And so we may get some things, we may get some small, smaller items, so people may come forward as well. But again, I don't think this is a, you know, we're covering our direct costs. I don't think we do a backfill at this point, and, and then we just kind of deal with this as a, out of the norm.
And the way I think of it is more like the water fund won't be getting a windfall as a result of the fires.
Got it. I believe Mr. Cook had some questions, or?
My question can kind of get answered, but if, is there an easy way that we can account for this? Like, if, if part of the resolution tonight was to get a report back in January after the fact, would that be an easy attainable request from the council?
Sure. Mr. Edwards?
I'd add one thing, is that it's, last October, we had about six inches of rain in October. This year, I think we had less than an inch. I don't know, you're, you're the water guy, Chris.
They're doing it 12 months, so they're going to have a whole year.
Yeah. But I'm just thinking of the actual water use to them when people evacuated their homes, their sprinkler systems were still on, that sort of thing. And, you know, when it rains, people turn them off. And so I think if it ends up being 26 homes, that's great. I know a lot of folks did put sprinklers on their homes. And a lot of ash falling and that sort of thing. So, you know, I think having the form is very important to, so the folks that realize that they're using more water because of the lack of rain, plus the fires. It's, thank you.
Any more questions before we go out to public comment? This time, I will open public comment.
Chris Petlock, 426 Napier Road. So where I work at, we've done almost 1,000 of these so far. It's very popular. Unfortunately, we've waived bills for almost 100 homes that were destroyed. But just as the Public Works Director was saying, you know, you're just covering your basic costs. And so it's not really a loss to the city at all. In fact, the opposite, there's no windfall to the city. I know myself, I had to stay, I had to go to work every day. My family had to stay at home. And even the, even though the ash was falling around our house, you know, I, I felt it was safe. I also felt like, to make my family feel safe, I wet everything down. You know, I left the sprinklers on, so that they felt good, so that I could go to work and not have to answer their call along with a million other calls I was dealing with. So I think this is a really great thing to do. I think it'll be very popular. And yeah, I hope it's only 25 or 26 people, but it's a, it's a good thing to do for citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back. And at this, oh, wait, I'm like moving ahead into the meeting. Bring it back to the council for discussion and action, Mr. Cook.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to pass a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sonoma to adopt a special October fires water bill adjustment that would allow the October 2017 water bills, upon customer request, to be adjusted to apply, apply the Tier 1 rate to water usage for above normal usage due to the October fires with, with a request for-
We can bring, we can bring you back a report in January.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Henley?
Aye.
Thank you.
And now, councilmembers' Reports and Comments.
Well, I have, let's see. I, I went to the fiscal interest, our city attorney, even though I don't have an answer for him. The Climate Action 2020, actually, oh gosh, they reversed, oh darn, I had it all written down. I was so totally prepared for it. We made two actions. One, of course, was to rescind, I don't think that's the right word, the EIR for the Climate Action 2020. That's something that we had to do because of the lawsuit. And we also, and this will be something that our city attorney is interested in, we actually approved a resolution to say that we'd still continue our efforts with respect to this. And in fact, I'm going to be meeting with Connor Prince to talk to him about the work that he does. And we'll keep our fingers crossed that possibly we can help to fund his position for a little longer. And Mr. Walter, I will get that information for you, so you can actually read what they decided to do. The other thing is, I read today Congressman Mike Thompson, and Representative Jared Huffman said that they have asked other Congress members for the state of California, have asked for $44 billion in disaster relief funds. And we have not received any of that money. And so they will be making that request again. I think it, he, they said that Governor Brown has set aside $7.4 billion to, in assistance for wildfire victims. So we're still working at the federal level for summer relief. I'd like to also add that I am so gratified, I feel so excited about the work we did this evening, especially dealing with the vacation rentals, the appointment of commissioners, the water rate study, and of course, lastly, adjusting water rates. And I hope as we move forward into our reorganization, that same energy will be here with this council. So I'm really appreciative of the work that was done today. I'm just so excited. I feel like we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That the turkeys are in the brine, and the free Thanksgiving dinner is going to be ready. 3 o'clock on Thursday.
Well, this is my last full meeting as mayor, so I feel like I have to make a comment, because I never make a comment. But fittingly, last Friday was a really fun day. Got to have breakfast, hearing about economics. Went to Sonoma Raceway to help film their holiday video where they, I got to hold a giant key that was about this big. And then I joined Susan Goran at the high school for Career Day, and there are at least four aspiring public officials in our high school at the moment. I'm sure there's more that were not in our session. And then we talked about the civic event this weekend, but the lighting of the plaza was also, I would say, a huge success. There were thousands of people there. Transcendence Theater Company sounded amazing. And it was just really nice to see everybody else. And I can't wait until it has an ice skating rink next year, maybe. And with that, I will pass it to our city manager for reports and announcements.
Great. So just a few brief things. Some items that are coming up on the December 4th meeting, we will be bringing back the tasting room moratorium for council action. Cannabis, we, there is one of your, the urgency ordinances that was recently approved needs to be extended, so we'll bring that back. But we'll also be bringing back a discussion about next steps and process and timeline. So that will be on the December 4th. And then also a contract extension with Farmer's Market, the Valley of the Moon Certified Farmer's Market. So those are some of other items that have been in the queue and that will be coming back. That's it. Thank you.
And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.